All right.
Selectmen's Association.
I got one, yeah. I haven't listened to it yet.
So when you get a chance afterwards.
I'm gonna take care of those before we end, yeah.
I'm gonna take the notes again in minutes, is that okay? I'll probably have them typed out in 24 hours.
Before Denise gets home.
Yeah.
Usually.
Drawing to you now, Betty.
We're ready?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, December 29th. We should've started at six, I apologize, we're a little late. At six o'clock, we usually have residents come in and give public comment if they wish to. I don't see anybody here tonight, but the Selectman Demore is going to review the rules on what one would do when they came into this meeting.
Okay, shall we do, shall we do the pledge of allegiance before we get started?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Betty, just briefly, I am, I wanna go over the ground rules for public comment and just remind the public that at six o'clock, 6:15, one of those starting times, we will kick off a meeting and anyone is welcome to attend our meeting and provide us with comments. So here are the rules for the public comment portion of the meeting. At each regular meeting which is open to the public, members of the public when recognized by the chair shall be afforded time, subject to reasonable constraints, constraints, to comment or ask questions of the board. Public comments and questions shall, and here's six rules, be limited to three minutes. Be directed to the board as a whole and not to individual members. Be presented in a professional demeanor. Not include negative remarks or disparaging comments directed towards public employees. Include topics that are relevant to the business matters of the Board of Selectmen. Only be recognized after the speaker provides their name and address for the meeting record prior to addressing the board. It shall be the decision of the board if it is appropriate to respond to a question or refer the party to the appropriate board or department. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you. I hope people get accustomed to that and understanding that they can come in, but they just have to follow the protocol. And we have warrants to approve payroll deduction and bill, if somebody would like to do that, please.
I'll go ahead and get those done. The first one is payroll, I'm sorry, yeah, payroll warrant number fifteen dash twenty-seven, for a total of one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four and thirty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen goes Gibbs Staines on the payroll warrant.
Okay. Deduct warrant fifteen dash twenty-five A for a total of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents, do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous, three Selectmen voted.
And the last item, bill warrant number fifteen dash twenty-seven for a total of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous.
Okay. Almost six twenty. Great.
Six twenty, six fifteen, Mike, we're five minutes late, but you're up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael Dempsey representing the Groveland Conservation Commission tonight, and...
Is that mic on? Is, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Here's a little bit of background material, but really the main thing that I'm talking about is the, the map that's on the last page.
And just for the viewing public and for the record, what is the agenda item specifically?
This relates to our land and water conservation fund grant that we hope to receive for, that will go towards the purchase of the Mattingly property.
Mattingly property, okay, very good, thank you.
So, so we have, we put this grant in LWCF grant in, in, about a year and a half ago, and we, we believe that according to the state, it's actually, it's actually a federal grant, but according to, the state has to review it all, the state has reviewed it positively. So according to our contacts at the state, it's a matter of just the National Park Service reviewing it and then we'll be getting the grant and putting that towards the purchase of Mattingly. We also applied for and received a waiver so that we can purchase the property before we get the grant, which was a recent development because prior to, about a month ago, we were still waiting, have to wait for the grant before we could buy the property. One last thing that they want from us is to make sure that the property is accessible. In the prior maps that we had sent with the grant application, it didn't really show that very well. So one of the things they came back asking was, you know, how would you access the property? So what I did was had, I drawn up a draft map and sent that off to my contact at the state, and she said that would work, and, and the Park Service also said that would work. So I had Woody Camet draw up a better map than what I had drawn up that shows the access through the former busing property. But what I wanted to make sure is that you approve of this. Now, according, I had to give an explanation to Attorney Eichmann from Town Council regarding what was the purpose of this map, because we were a little nervous about, you know, whether or not we had to do something to either the former busing property or before we purchased, again, the Mattingly property to somehow legally define this corridor. But no, that's not the word that I got. Primarily, the purpose of this map is to show that the property has access to Center Street, unimpeded access, doesn't have to cross any, like, over to Baldwin Terrace would have to cross property that we don't own, or, you know, whatever. But they're primarily interested in showing on a map that we have access to that property to a street. So that's the purpose of that corridor that's been added through the former busing land that we now own that says access to Center Street.
So Skyline Heights, is Mrs. Mattingly?
Yes.
And the town of Groveland, has, we have access to Center Street through our land?
Yes.
Onto Center, how long is that corridor, Mike?
Oh, that corridor is, I would say, it's a good, I, I would estimate it's like about 500 feet.
Do we have to keep that cleared?
No, you know, as far as we've been told, you know, it's just a matter of showing for the grant that we have access to it.
Does it have to be marked off?
No.
Any markings of any kind? How much is the grant for?
The grant is approximately $200,000.
So there's no way we're gonna get caught up in any bureaucracy not getting this money?
No, I, I believe not, and that was why we, you know, I gave that long explanation that's on here to Attorney Eichmann, just to get his sense on it, and he, he seemed to understand what we were being asked to do and approve that we did it.
I just don't want the town on, on any way concerned about that.
The grant?
Yes.
Wasn't that going to be for the turtle, not that one?
That's a different grant.
Different grant, okay, okay.
Yes.
So this grant is strictly something totally different than we talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the turtle one is going towards the purchase, that's $120,000 from Natural Heritage that was put in there by our electric company because of the turtles.
So this grant isn't gonna lock the land up, you can't use it later, or whatever, it's just basically...
It, it, I mean, that land is gonna be under a conservation restriction anyway, you know, the, the, the Skyline Heights Realty parcel along with Angelini will have a conservation restriction on them that specifically states the purpose being passive recreation and water supply and water quality.
So it's not, it's not a developable piece of land?
Right.
It's gonna be conservation land, and that's what the, the money basically is going onto that Skyline Heights, it's gonna be conservation strictly, conservation land, water restriction for future water well work or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
As Angelini says?
Yes. They'll both be covered under the same conservation restriction.
And just so you're aware, we did receive the $120,000 grant already, so that has been received.
I, I have a question, if I can, Betty.
Go ahead.
The, the access, how, the National Park Service, just so people understand, the National Park Service is not gonna give us a lot of money for open space acquisition unless we can have the public access it.
Yes.
That's what this access lane is.
Right.
So how, how are we going to deliver that promise, is it a written contract, or is it part of the application, an addendum?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's already part of the application that we put in, that we say the public is gonna have access.
So we attach the map, addendum, there it is.
Yes.
So I'm assuming we have the right to change that in the future?
Yes.
So if we go off the deep end, for example, and decide to sell the busing property or conservation subdivision or turn it into something else, or a friendly 40B or whatever, we're not stuck with, oh, I'm sorry, we ran something through there that we can't take away?
Right.
Okay.
See, and that's, that's the good thing about it not having to be, from what I can tell, that we're not having to have a specific, like, I thought they were gonna make us put in the deed, say, something to do with the deed, that it specifically outlined where that access was. But if we were ever to, if that access were blocked for some reason, whatever reason, we could even get out through the Water Department land on the other side.
Okay, that's all, that's all I needed then, thank you.
Would that be noted someplace that if, by you, that if, if we were not able to get there, we still had access from the Water Department property?
Yes, well...
You know what happens down the road when we're not here? Things change.
Right, right.
We just have to plan to be here forever.
It sounds like once it goes through, they're not gonna be edged in stone where it's gonna be as long as it is access.
Right.
Because you would hate to have a, a deed, a deeded way, it can't be moved, then they go to develop the front piece of land, and it, that messes up development.
Right.
I think that's what Joe was leading to, so as long as we don't have to edge that in ink, we can move it around, we're good to go, I think.
Comfortable with that, Denise, and all that language?
I am, I just have a question though, Mike, so access for the public to get to, to do what? What is, what are we giving the public access for, just to...
Those two properties, primary purpose as defined by the conservation restriction, which is required primarily by using CPA funds, we have to have a conservation restriction on it. But, so the main purpose of those two properties for the public are gonna be passive recreation, such as, you know, hiking, walking, going on the trails there, snow shoeing, skiing, any non-active...
No, nothing, no ATVs?
Yes, no ATVs, no hunting, no, no, like, we couldn't put a baseball field there, because that's active recreation, but any passive recreation. So particularly, we wanna make sure that people can get in there to use the trails, and we've already agreed with Mr. Angelini that we're not gonna use Dewhurst Street over there to enter it. So that kind of restricts access to his property through the Water Department land off of Washington Street, or, you know, through the former busing land, through the Water Department land. But the good thing is that we have access, at least three points of access, to those two pieces, especially because Skyline Heights is landlocked otherwise.
Is that fine, Denise? Anything else we need to know?
No, so I would like you to...
With the Water Department earlier? Were you here earlier to meet with them?
No.
They had about a three o'clock meeting, I think.
Yeah, no, I didn't. But they, they have this map. So I just would like you to make a motion to accept this map or plan of Mattingly dated 12/23/14 for the purpose of the LWCF grant.
Say this, what do you want for the motion, Mike, again, accept the map?
To accept the map of the Mattingly property dated 12/23/14 for the purpose of the LWCF grant.
Do I have a motion from...
Wanna make a motion, Bill? Wanna make a motion?
I didn't write anything down.
Okay.
Want me to read it? Accept map of Matling, Mattingly property dated 12/23/14 for purposes of the LWCF grant, as of today's date?
Yeah. So moved, or I'll make that motion stated by the chair.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Denise, you have the language?
Do we have a, a date on the closing of those two pieces of property yet?
So we have a date on one of them, Mrs. Mattingly's property is scheduled to close on the 31st. The board will be taking up the deed and several other items later on. The Angelini property is a bit more complex, we were scheduled to close, but his attorney has now come back and is contesting several of the items, so we've now delayed the closing.
I just heard that when I came in too.
Yeah.
That it was going to be delayed, but Mattingly's property is all set to go.
Correct, correct, so the board will still take up some of the items on the Angelini property, I will have you sign if there are any changes between now and the closing. We will have, our attorneys will actually forward the documents for you to review, and if you accept them, then we will just put them with the signed paperwork.
So if they're big changes, we will just get rid of those documents and start fresh?
Yes, our council will not allow anything to go through unless the board sees it and approves it. But we were scheduled, we were actually...
I thought we were doing that tonight, and I just heard as I came in that there had been some delays at Mr. Angelini's lawyer's office, Mr. Attorney Shannon, I think.
Yes.
Yes, at 4:45.
No, I didn't, but it doesn't surprise me.
At 4:45, things just kinda changed, so...
So the, the last thing that I am working on is the conservation restriction, because Attorney Eichmann agreed that we can put it on the two properties after, after their purchase, which I, from what I understand, it really doesn't make any difference, it's just easier to do it at the closing, because, you know, you're there at the registry and everything. But we are still waiting for both Natural Heritage, DEP, the state, and Essex County Green Belt to all finish their reviews on it, and then it has to work its way through the state to get signed off on, so, you know, it could be another six months, so it's good that we don't have to wait for it. But I will keep on top of that because it needs to be done, and we've done so much work to get through the whole process, I'd hate to see it fall apart, so...
The grant that came in, the 120, and this other one that we were talking about?
Yes.
Tonight, that's all attributable to the Mattingly property?
Yes.
Okay, which is scheduled to close the 31st, very good.
So that's a good thing.
So keep us up to date as this moves in long periodically, so doesn't get...
So obviously those grants, so make it in English, that's offsetting the price of the land, so town's not paying, and so the people aren't just hearing this, we're not paying that much, we're getting the money back to offset what we were gonna buy it for.
Yes, Mattingly is actually, we're buying it for 500,000, but we're actually only paying about $180,000 for it.
So that's why we're worth it?
Yeah.
The rest is over the two grants, got it?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So that was actually my question, so actually wired 380,000 today to cover the closing, so the $200,000 grant is coming back at some point.
Yes, and then that'll go to pay back CPA funds.
Thank you. Is that what happens, CPA gets money back, sent back to them with all the grants that are out there?
Yes. Doesn't happen that way, timing wise, all the time, but in this case, it does, so...
It would've been better to just offset the price initially, like the other grant did, but for timing's sake, we don't have that time.
Very good, thank you for all the information tonight.
Thank you, Mike, well done.
Sure.
Show the rest of you holidays. While we're waiting for the chief, if I could, if I may, just advance one item, we have a letter of recommendation for a young man, Jeff Geiger, who is advancing towards the coveted title of Eagle Scout. He had asked if we would write a letter of recommendation, I'd like to read it to you, we did. Jeff, as you probably know, was involved with that amazing project of retiring old US flags. So here's the letter, it is, "The pleasure of the Board of Selectmen to recommend Jeff Geiger for advancement due to his extraordinary service to our townspeople. On November 16th, 2014, Jeff demonstrated the method for retiring our nation's flags at a presentation and solemn ceremony at VZ Park. This culminated in months of preparation and coordination with our local veterans groups. Jeff exemplifies the honorable and vital principles of living espoused by the Boy Scouts of America and our community has greatly benefited from his efforts. We, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Groveland endorse his advancement because of his distinction as a vital member of our community. Signed by all three of us." Thank you. Wanna pass that to...
And thank you to Jeff Geiger. It's a good community project. Bob, you're on deck.
In the hole or on deck?
On deck.
Definitely someone's at the plate right now.
Well, we are. We're still warming up.
I'm officially up next.
You are. How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, very good, thank you.
Bill?
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
How are you? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
What else are you here for? I was just kidding.
I was told 7:40, we're early, which I like.
No, you were 6:40.
That's what I mean, 6:40, that's what it is, 6:40, I guess 7:30 in my head, so we started early, we should finish early, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because I am headed you know where, Joe.
Yeah, God's country.
Yes, I am. Okay, last time in, we talked about two things, and I believe that's what I'm back for.
Refresh my memory, do we talk about training?
I'm going to.
Do we talk about revising job descriptions? Do we talk about equipment? We talked about, the last time I saw you, we had a whole crowd here talking about everything.
Well, that was the, that was more of the truck evening.
It was a truck evening.
Tonight is the, I, I was in and, to let you know that it looked like I was gonna overrun my training budget because of a couple of initiatives we have underway. One of those was the Mass Call Volunteer Firefighter Academy, which we're hosting, runs for six months. I have three students in that class, as of now, I have one on the waiting list. I'm only budgeted for two. That, the budget really doesn't cover the full expense for the two, and I've yet to talk to the, to the men about that shortfall yet, but it looks like if I stick with the 26, 25 that they're budgeted at, and this is for 230 hours of training, so it's below their base rate pay, but it's, it's much better than what I thought we were looking at. The two that, and I'm probably gonna get this fourth guy in on the class, so it looks like I'll have four, I will be able to cover that shortfall inside of my, inside of my existing budget, probably inside of a little bit of my training budget, a little bit of my wage account, which I'm currently underrunning, and the remainder of the clerk's salary, which we never spent. So I have that sitting in there, so it looks like I'm going to be able to cover it. That's for the firefighter one training. The other training that I have is nine of my, I'm sorry, seven of my officers are currently enrolled in the Fire Officer One class. Two of my privates are enrolled in the same class, looking to advance sometime down the road, so I got nine people in the class, includes me and the deputy. That will give me 100% Fire Officer One for my officer group. Problem is, those are about $1,000 ahead. It's a, it's five weekends in January, I'm looking at $10,000, that was the number that concerned me the most. The way I currently sit mid-year against my budget, it looks like I'll be able to handle that out of my wage account, which I'm underrunning at a pretty good clip. So the concern I had was before I had mid-year numbers, I now have them, I now have my, my reporting system up and running, so I can see where I'm at, and I wanna go forward, just to let you know, we're gonna begin to pay folks monthly, which means the reporting coming over to Town Hall against year-to-date spend or budget-to-date spend will be on a monthly basis. So we get a better look at it.
How do we get it now, Bob? Is it, is it two times, twice a year or something?
Used to be twice a year, was the pay schedule. It's problematic to pay that way. It's not good management, it's not good budget management, it's not good employment management, paying people so infrequently.
Can I ask for clarification before you move on? The Mass Call Firefighters Academy, that's what delivers what's called firefighter one training.
Firefighter one, two, correct.
You, you, you budgeted for two, but you've got one waiting or two waiting?
I have three accepted.
Okay.
One on the waitlist, because it's limited to 40. They accept 45 applications. Knowing that by the time some folks commute to Groveland on their first night, they'll wonder what they signed up for, you've only missed a couple of classes, it's over six months. There is absolute casualties in the first couple of weeks, so they plan that into their enrollment.
Due to the travel time, huh?
It, it's a, it's a significant, you can't be late, starts at 6:30 at night, you can't be late, runs on the weekends, it's a huge commitment. It, it isn't like a lot of things where you cruise in and say, I had a family emergency, I'm late.
No, you have to be there for the entire session.
They're not buying it.
And you have money in the budget to accommodate four?
Correct, I can cover the four.
Good, that's what I thought, I just wanna clarify.
And I believe that the way things are running, I can cover the nine in the Fire Officer One class.
Just for the, for the record, I'm taking minutes as well, so sometimes I need to kinda...
So I need to slow down for you?
Slow a little bit, you need to be slow for me anyways. Now, the seven firefighters and the two privates of the seven officers, that includes you and the deputy chief, that's another training, that's the training you're gonna sponsor here in Groveland, what's the name of that training?
Fire Officer One.
Fire Officer One, now Fire Officer One, if I take, going back to my notes from last year, if I take Fire Officer One course, aren't there prerequisite courses that are required to be able to get certified? In other words, if I take a Fire Officer One course, that doesn't put me necessarily on a path to be certified, is that correct?
Does it put you on a path, yes it does. Can you take the certification without having firefighter one, two first? No, you can't.
But certainly the benefit to our town is that the men are gonna be better trained.
Absolutely.
And more able to respond to situations in our town.
Absolutely.
And in and of itself, that could be enough of a reason to do this.
They have all the reasons in the world to do it, I can't find any reasons not to do it. It's, it's, it's where most departments are, and we need to get there. If, if I required firefighter one, two, because it is not a prerequisite, there is to be certified, if I required it, we, we may never get there.
Right, right, understood, of course, because that would be what, firefighter one and... Because that would be what, Firefighter One and Two, I think you have to do to get certified?
Correct.
So this is separate? This is, this is really training to do your job better, whether you're on a track to get certified or not?
It is training to be a better officer.
Got it.
A better leader, a better manager, okay, better on the fire ground, creates a safer environment for everybody. And we're all operating in a similar manner, because we've all been trained the same way. The greatest benefit is we all sat in the same class. We get to, we get to work through this class together, we get to role-play together, we do, we put into situations together. Certainly, we get to do that with offices from other departments as well. It's a huge opportunity for us as a department to grow and grow quickly.
And we're not required as a town to have to give our guys this, this is something like a benefit almost, to help our department, your department have a great train.
Correct, I want to be careful when I answer, there's always questions around what is required. And there aren't a lot of requirements around this business, but it's the standard you'd be held to in a court of law. Okay? So the days of being able to say, oh, we didn't know, have long since passed us. So we know enough collectively to say, we need to get trained, and we need to get trained quickly for the benefit of the department and the community in which we serve.
It's a, it's a big commitment, like you said, for young men to go to the classes and come in and whatever. It's also a big commitment for the town or your department to pay the money for these guys, and it's too bad that we couldn't somehow, you spend the money to train these guys, and you said last time you were in here, you had to put the clothing on them, you had to put the tanks and blah, blah, blah. That's a lot of money to get a guy ready to go fight a fire.
Yep.
And it, it would, it would be nice if we could get them to definitely stay for a period of time. And I know it can't be done, but that's like me getting someone in my business ready to be a landscaper, I train them, I get them all ready, and guess what, they found a better job someplace else and they're gone.
Actually, and I haven't done an analysis on that, but I could certainly give you my instinct around that.
Yep.
The better trained people are easier to retain, okay? It's when you're not well-equipped and you're not well-trained, it's hard to fit in, okay, on a department that's moving in a good direction. So the training actually improves our retention. We don't have a lot of people that get trained and then uproot and lead the town in search of being a firefighter somewhere. It's rare. We had one that I can think of, okay? But he couldn't afford to buy in this town. The only reason he left the town, he'd probably come back to this town someday, okay? He's, he's deep-rooted here. And he'd come back to my department, so it would come kind of full, full circle. But rarely do the people leave, Bill. They attrit for other reasons, forced to move out of town.
So if I may, you, you have seven officers, two privates, and then yourself makes ten?
Nine, include nine. I'm, I'm an officer, just happen to be a senior officer.
So you have eight officers, seven?
Okay, no.
Oh, nine, I'm sorry, you have a total of nine.
Seven officers, two privates, makes nine.
Okay.
I have a couple that already have the training.
Got it. The total expenditure that's not within the budget is ten thousand?
Not in my training budget. I will be able to cover it out of my wage budget.
Got it, okay.
Can I just ask a question, Bob?
Oh, sure.
So if, what happens when an incident or if an incident occurs on a weekend? Will you rely on mutual aid to cover those calls if all of your officers are in training?
Good question. I will talk with the area chiefs and let them know that we're in, some of them are in this class as well. But my folks can operate without an officer, okay? I have a lot of privates that have a lot of good training. They operate without officers today, often. Senior private is the officer on a truck. If I was, if we were sitting in a class and we obviously had a significant event, you know, we do the right thing, excuse ourselves, get coverage and go back in, so. Good question, but could happen. The big event is a rare event, so we hope that continues. So that was the concern I had, that one has, I've cared for that.
Yeah, you've found the money?
Yep.
In the budget.
When you get a moment, nothing urgent, but I'd love to see the list of the men that signed up.
Sure.
That'd be helpful. That's exciting, people are actually signing up for training. It's good stuff. Also, so the public understands, we're sponsoring this, so we have other firefighters from other communities coming to our town.
Correct. We're sponsoring both of the classes I just talked about. It's, it's the first time that I'm aware of that we sponsored anything like this. It's a good thing for the Groveland Fire Department, it's a good thing for the Town of Groveland, for us to host an event like this.
I just want us, want them to remember us, and if we need them for mutual aid, that's...
Get them anyhow.
How far away? Where, where do they come from, the instructors? Is it Agawam or where is it?
The instructor, well, they come out of the academy, so I'm not sure where, one of the instructors, I believe, is either from Hamilton or Wenham.
Okay.
He'd be the lead instructor. One is the Georgetown chief, he does a lot of instructing, so he lives in Boxer. Some may come from further away. There are, I believe, eight or maybe even more than eight instructors. There's forty people in a class, it's a big class, okay? That's a lot of people to teach.
Right.
And you're doing it at the central station, or?
Yes. And we are being televised, right? Oh, good, so the, so good, so good, the road commissioner has offered to help me clean up the back of central station to accommodate the training before winter hits, so a shout out to the road commissioner, I'd like to thank him publicly.
All right, yes.
Wonderful.
Do you hear that, Bob?
He's not watching.
And if anyone hasn't been to the fire station lately, you should get over there, they've really done a great job updating it, painting it, doing the floors, it looks great.
The associates from the Sheriff's Department have been in to help.
Good.
And done some really nice work.
In both stations.
Both stations, looking good.
Wonderful, that's good news. Very good. So what else do we need to touch on?
The other item on the agenda was, we were going to talk about how to approach my budget for sixteen? And, and how we should go about assembling that, based on some earlier discussions we had around modifying my position in particular.
This will be your first budget cycle?
Second.
Second, okay.
My second, and I'm underrunning my first.
Denise, will you be working with the fire chief on his budget and make recommendations to the finance committee, or will we, how is this going to play out?
Yes, but it's really up to the board to determine the number of hours and salary that the chief is looking for. So if the, if the board takes up a salary and, and number of hours, then yes, we can incorporate that into his budget and work with the finance board.
Denise, if we were to do that, how do we fund the chief's line item for salary? Where will we find that? Do you have any idea?
At this point, I don't. I haven't seen the state aid proposals for next year. We were hit with a significant retirement increase, and I don't know what other departments are requesting. So once I start to see the budgets come back, I haven't received any back yet. They are due next Friday, the ninth. So once I start to see that, then I'll have a better idea of where we stand and where we can take money from.
Bob.
Phil.
How you doing, buddy? Last time we talked, I had said, do you have like a list of things that you've done, you've done a lot to the department, you cleaned it up, whatever, and said how many hours you think you need to continue on with your work? Currently, right now, you feel like there's not enough hours to complete the job the way you'd like to complete it? And what I said is, when you come back, let's have a list of what, totally how many hours. Did you do that by any chance?
Well, yes and no. Really hard to do because I don't keep track of every activity. It's hard enough to keep track of my hours, much less the activities inside of the hours. So understand, when I come in and work, like today, I, I worked six hours, probably did thirty things inside of the six hours, so imagine a time of sitting there, tracking my own activity against my hours, it becomes a little bit of a problem. So I, I thought about this, and I thought the best way to demonstrate what needs to be done would be to go back to the job description. Because the job description, if you look at it, and, and you look at job descriptions for other fire chiefs in other communities, they're all the same. The, the only variables become the size of the community, the, the, the size of their staff, perhaps, they may have more, more full-time employees they're managing, and they may run an ambulance, they may run some other facilities. So those tend to be bigger communities, and their, their salaries tend to be well in excess of, of a hundred thousand dollars. And, and they have, and they have other people that are doing the job. So in a department of one fire chief and no other paid employees, I, I went and got the salary comps from the area communities. I, I have that, I have a lot of that, I know what everybody else is getting paid. Sadly enough, I'm at the low end of that, but, but I know we're, we're, we're trying to make that right. So as you look at the job description, if we sat down, we looked, we said, well, how, how important is this line? And how often do you think you do that? We, we could do that, but I will tell you, the ISO rating that we, we received, and I, I think you folks received a copy of that report in September, Bill, you probably haven't seen it, he wouldn't have seen that, right? Or would he?
He should have.
This September?
Yeah, it was, it was the, a report that came back from ISO. So that is the measure of the community against their ability to do fire suppression, and it really rates the fire department, it rates the water supply to some degree. Our biggest hits that we took were against the things that I don't do. Fire prevention, okay, inspections, we lose a lot of points in that area, I just don't have the, not humanly possible to do that. I spend the majority of my time operationally, okay? Not out doing, I mean, like, sure, I do some inspections, sure, I go to meetings, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm in a lot of the places where I should be, but just managing day-to-day operations, remember, I have forty employees, whether they're full-time or not, that's, that's forty people that I'm managing.
As far as the inspections go?
Yep.
Am I correct when I say this? We used to have someone that did that?
We still have someone that does a smoke detector and CO inspections, oil burner installations and tank removals and, and installations. That's a small share of the overall what needs to be done. That's, those are required inspections by the state. This other inspections?
I understand.
Code enforcement?
But to give him some of, I'm not trying to jip you, believe me, but to give him some of that other work?
I, I'm not budgeted for that.
So he gets paid for what he's doing? It's not free, it's?
Everybody gets, everybody gets paid for their work.
Okay, all right.
Okay? You don't save anything for, for me to train someone else to do my job and delegate it?
It's the same thing as you doing it.
You know, there are certain things that the chief needs to do.
Right.
Okay? That's what my job description would say. I need to create a training plan. I have a pretty good training program, but I don't have a rock-solid plan. Plan's a whole nother level of training, okay? I have a pretty good handle on my training, but I don't have a training plan, okay? Those types of things, and those are the higher-level things, those are the things we lost points on through ISO. That's the stuff we need to pay attention to. None of this department, and I've, I've told you before and I'll tell you again, this model is alive, and I can keep it alive for a long time. Nothing inside of what we do is set it and forget it. It needs to be actively managed. January first, a couple of days away, the state of Massachusetts adopts a new fire code, totally new fire code, okay? Huge changes, huge learning curve for everybody. So, you know, to be on top of the code work? The investigation, the requests, you know, today I come in and prepare for this, a gentleman calls me, he says, I need to sign off on a building permit. That's not a sign, that's, you need to understand, you need, there's a lot of work.
Your job description right now, your job description hours that you work?
There are no hours against my job description.
So there's no hours, so you're working, you're working roughly twenty hours? I mean, what are you right, right now, roughly?
On average?
Putting in for?
Putting in for?
Well, I don't know how, I mean, I'm probably saying this wrong.
Here's, here's what you pay me for, sixteen.
Okay, sixteen, there we go.
I always, I always work more than that.
Okay, so you're sixteen is what you're putting in for?
That's the stuff I remember to take credit for, but...
And what I'm asking you is, where do you need, where do you think you need to be? Thirty, forty, fifty? Where do you think you need to be?
I've, we've had a little bit of this discussion before. What I submitted last year was I felt as though I could do it in thirty, because I don't have full-time people and I don't run an ambulance, and I'm tremendously efficient. Only problem with that is, that's me. Could anybody do it in thirty? I don't know that. But we give five years to figure out if thirty's the right number. If it needs to go to forty for when I retire and you recruit and hire a, you know, whiz-bang fire chief with all kinds of credentials, and you're paying him for forty hours, we'll have, we'll have a better handle on that. But right now, for what this department is, I believe I can, I can effectively do it in thirty hours.
Right, so in that thirty hours?
Yep.
And I'm not, believe me, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm trying to just figure this out.
You're not picking on me, Bill.
In that thirty hours, say, five hours would be this, ten hours would be that, five hours would be this, could you come up with something to us? I'm not holding you to what exactly you're doing, but what I'm trying to do is come up with like, okay, Bill, I know I'm going to work thirty hours, I'm going to be, I have to work five hours on training, I have to work ten hours on, on a permit, so whatever, you know what I'm trying to say? Do you know in a, in that thirty-hour week time what you need to do to justify the thirty hours? That's all I'm asking. And I know you do a lot of things, I understand what you, I hear you are.
I know, I know you're not questioning what, what I'm doing. I, I could do that, I could say ten, ten, and ten. Ten with inspections, ten with training, ten, or I could go five across, there's a lot of ways to skin that cat. Or I could break it down into one-hour increments. I don't know what that serves, what purpose that really serves us.
Only because I, as a selectman?
Yep.
Am trying to show the town people, watching this on TV right now, to justify your thirty hours, that's all I'm trying to do. That's my job. I mean, you're doing it in twenty, you're not getting enough hours, I'm just trying to justify, I'm trying to build a case, help you build a case, and try and let the people in the town understand what's going on, that's all I'm trying to do.
I can do that.
And, and I'm trying to be fair, and that's all. I, I, I know, like you said, you can skin the cat any way you want, you could say five, five, and five, I was just trying to get an honest number that you thought, like...
Well, I would only, whatever...
Like, say to me, Bill, I need fifty.
Whatever.
You know, whatever.
I won't do that.
You know, you know...
I won't do that. Whatever approach I take, we'll be honest.
Right.
There's no question about that. I, I'm just saying, there's a, I could allocate my time in a, in a variety of ways, okay? Now, if I prioritized it, I would take from things that are most important, and I would tell you that they are fire inspections against businesses that currently aren't done. So I'd tell you, there's a hundred businesses in town, most of them get done annually, some twice a year, some four times a year.
Is that free, that inspection, free to the businesses?
That inspection is free. Yes, it is.
So we couldn't recoup some of your money back?
There is something that I'll recommend to you later, but it doesn't come up until the next fiscal year, is our fee schedule hasn't been touched forever. You're leaving all kinds of money on the table. I see all kinds of money, I don't know, four, five thousand dollars a year, but you leave that on the table. We don't, we don't charge for burning permits, they're free. A lot of towns get paid. I, I run a website to handle burning permits, I pay eight hundred dollars a year to run a website, of which I don't get re... I, I run a website to handle burning permits. I pay eight hundred dollars a year to run a website, of which I don't get re-
You don't recoup any of it?
Don't get anything. So, we need to look at some of that, there is an opportunity, I've looked at that. Bill, I, I could spend, you know, I could spend eight hours today just working on that one thing. And, and that's, you know, I could take that and layer it out, my Knox box program, and I could spend a whole bunch of time on that. You know, I don't touch that today. We don't even know what the Knox boxes are. Okay? Because it's not formalized. So many things that I need to get my arms around, formalize and develop and implement, and it's all about that. The time to create and implement is way different than the time to monitor and, you know, improve.
And I said this to you before, and I have a hard time grasping it, because when I first came to Groveland, you know, back in eighty-six, it was more of a call voluntary department, more or less, I guess. I have the impression that, John, could you handle this? Paul, could you handle that? And it's not like that. It's like, you explained it to me already once, these guys get paid for everything they do. And I, I, I thought, as a chief, you go and say, "Hell, you ten guys, I'll have a job," boom, 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 boom. And they go out and do it, and we have fun doing it. It's not that way. It's a, it's really a paid department.
I don't want to characterize it, there is some of that, but not, you know...
I'm sure there is, I'm sure there is, but you get what I'm trying to get at.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And what I was trying to do was try and take some of your burden away by saying, "Wow, if you have a guy that you can divide this up, and take some of your burden away," but it sounds to me like just your job as a chief, you're looking, you're looking for more hours, just to do your job as a chief.
You, you would not want me to parse out the chief's job.
No, I don't mean that, I, I don't, I don't mean-
I know, I know you don't, but you don't want me having people with less experience performing my job. I know that's not what you're asking, but, uh, the, these guys, they, they, they commit a whole lot, or just being on the fire department and being trained is a huge commitment. Okay? It's a huge commitment, it's a lifestyle. Uh, one that they've accepted.
They love it, but they wouldn't do it if they didn't love it.
You, you're probably right, uh, but it's, it's significant. It's a lifestyle, and you miss a lot of life events, you miss a lot of family time.
It's a good brotherhood too, as you probably know.
It's a great brotherhood.
Yeah.
But they argue like brothers too.
That's okay.
But yes, I mean, I, I can put some hours against stuff, I can...
I think you've already answered my questions for me.
It's all, it's all out there.
And I think the people watching the TV tonight can understand from what, how you and I have talked. I think they can understand, you don't need to come in with a piece of paper and say five, five, you've explained it. I mean, you need more hours to run your job as a chief. Have an extra guy to do it or whatever, it's still gonna be paid, it's still gonna be done, and you as a chief need to do that job. So...
The, the, the work needs to get done, and I'm not a scare, I'm not a, I'm not a scare...
My question, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a scare tactic kind of guy.
Yeah.
But this has needed change, and unfortunately, in public safety, change comes after something terrible happens.
Right, unfortunately.
And none of us are waiting for that, and then we're trying to get out ahead of that. This, this, this town's, you know, it is a pretty safe place to be, we need to make it more safe. That's my job.
Bob, when you talk about fire prevention, what, what does that entail?
Fire prevention really has two legs. One is education, is public education, which is the two target audiences for that are the young and the elderly. Uh, we do, we do, we do a little bit of the young, uh, we don't do any elderly, unless you consider my having breakfast with the, with the men one day. But it was good.
Right.
We need to do more of that. I need to be, you know, down to Whitestone, I need to be at Nichols, I need to be at River Pines, I need to be meeting with people. There's all kinds of education programs, uh, there's all kinds of training that I would need to take first in, in life and public safety education, to be a certified trainer to go out and do that. That's a huge piece of it, is just teaching people how to be safe. The state fire marshal's office has a ton of programs aimed at, you know, winter safety, cooking safety. I just did a couple of presentations down at high school where we talked about, you know, the, the number-one day of the year for house fires. Can you guess?
What was it again?
Day I'm cooking my turkey.
Number one, number one day out of the year for house fires.
Thanksgiving.
You're runner-up.
Christmas.
It's Christmas. The majority of fires are around cooking. Okay, so, there you go, right? Christmas, high cooking, Thanksgiving, second, um, all that kind of stuff. So, anyhow, teaching people how to be safe in their homes, and then teaching children the, the, the other end of that, how to be safe in their homes, but how to make sure their parents are teaching them to be safe. So, that's the public education part, Betty.
Right.
There, there's grant money for that, if you're doing a good job. We took a big hit on that in our ISO rating, because we don't do any of it. Okay? We do a couple of days a year down at Bag Now, we got a little bit of credit for that, I'm watching the clock, Denise. Because I know I get a hard start. So, you know, we do some of that, then the other side of fire prevention, which is what the fire service is all about, is public safety and making sure that people are following the rules. Simply stated, there are rules and regulations, there's, there's code, and everybody needs to follow them. Just like you would follow planning or zoning or building codes.
All those kinds of things.
And that's, that's a big piece.
Right.
It's a big piece.
Well, I, I would say that getting over to Bagnell School, doing training over there, and getting to Nichols Village, getting to the Groveland Housing Authority, that's, those are huge things that we need to address. And as you say, you got marked down because we haven't done enough of that on the ISO.
You can see, if you look at the ratings, and I know that document was fairly confusing, I'd be happy to sit with the three, four, you know, anybody that wants to sit and go through that and do a high-level analysis, you can see where the, where the points are that we didn't get. And it's not trucks.
Right.
It's training. Hard to hit the training number, because you need eighteen hours a month of, 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 you know, tactical fire training, it's just, nobody gets that. Cambridge probably gets it, but nobody else gets it. So, we did pretty good in training, because we have a program, we, we get a fair amount for call, you don't lose money, because you're, you don't lose points, because you're a call department, there's, there's some algorithm that put against your numbers. We're okay from that perspective. But, you know, pre-incident planning, we don't have plans in buildings where we should. I don't have a plan for the manor, I don't have a plan for Greg Stark's building. I don't, I don't, I don't plan for anywhere, because they're nonexistent. They weren't developed in the past, we don't have it in writing.
And I know you met with opposition when you tried to do an inspection a few months ago, so, that, we need to back you up on that.
Lot of work to do. So, the fire prevention, and that, that, that's the big part of the chief's job, and then all the other admin, administrative part of things. You, you know we put fire programs in a year ago, so all of a sudden, and I don't have a lot of information yet, because I'm only into it for six months, but I run another six months, and now I can actually begin to pull reports against the town and what they do, we're reporting at the state level, we're reporting at the federal level, we never did that before. It's all automated, the system's working great, we just did payroll, our first payroll out of the system. A little bit of noise, because it was a little bit of a change, and we had some folks that thought they had been paid incorrectly. Yesterday, I met with those individuals, we did an analysis, their records against our records, and the officers at South Station were very good about walking us through that. And we found one mistake out of all the calls we've been on, we were off by one hour, and it was on the first call, July first, that we put into the system. So, it affected five firefighters, we'll correct that in the next pay. Okay?
Very good, and we're doing it monthly, so no one's waiting for that?
So, the accuracy against that, I mean, you know, you'd say it was ninety-nine point something, um, it's good. We've never had that degree of accuracy, that degree of record-keeping, took me one minute to do payroll. One minute, okay?
I appreciate you for other things.
Bob, I got one last question, and I'm gonna let you go.
Oh, sure.
Okay, not a dollar amount.
Okay.
I want to hear a dollar amount. If you took a town in this area with our model, with what engines, forget the, we don't have the ambulance, blah, blah, blah. What our model is, the chief in those towns, not a dollar amount, hours, do you have a list of what they work for hours, what their hours are?
Well, um, yes.
I know you can't nail it on the head, but you can get close.
Well, I, I can. I can tell you the four chiefs that don't work forty.
They don't work forty?
Everybody else works forty hours plus.
So, they all work forty hours plus?
Yeah. Merrimack, you know, I would, I'd give you the sheet and you can see the numbers. It's, you know, it's what it is.
So, the average town around here, the chiefs are working forty, average forty?
Only, only, you know, West Newbury is not.
What's that?
West Newbury is not. Essex and Rockport would be the only other two. Essex is in the middle of studying, and they have a committee like our...
Government Advisory Council, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, your, your action committee. They have one of those going on in Essex, they've, they've hired a consultant to do some work, they have the information back. They're looking to go strong chief full-time in Essex, and they're half the size of us, population-wise. Essex and Rockport obviously swell in the summertime.
All I'm trying to do, is you see what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to build what some, I don't want dollar amount, because people get dollar amount drives them crazy. You know what I mean? Hours would be different, hours would be, we're gonna compare our, what you do, other models.
What, what I've said before is, thirty puts me in, in a good spot to get a lot of work done. Okay? I do delegate stuff, and, because there's an opportunity to train people and educate people through delegation. So, I don't want to be the only guy that knows how to do things, that, that, that's a bad model. So, I am working with the others to, to teach them how to do some of what I do. And at the end of this, in five years, right, when I'm done...
You don't want to have to be doing this all over again with someone else.
I should be leaving you with, you know, a department that's, that's healthy, and a couple of guys that could walk right in and do my job.
Right, and that's how it should be, and that's how I feel, delegation.
Yeah, and that's...
And that's a good department, as you probably know.
Succession planning, and that's, and that's what I'm working on. You know, I've identified some people, and that's, that's why we're doing this training, that's why we're doing what we're doing, so...
Thank you. I think Joe had a question or two.
Yeah, um, I, I don't think my board has a problem understanding...
Your board?
Uh, this board that I'm on has a problem understanding that the, in my opinion, the only way to increase your hours is to engage in a negotiation, contract negotiations. And I think in a week, hopefully, or two, when Denise has the numbers reported from other budgets, then as a board, we would have something to negotiate with. So, the short answer to answer your question from a while ago is, how do we go about it, I believe, would be through contract negotiations. That's my opinion. Now, I also have some thoughts, and I want to share a little bit of history, and, and it's okay for us to be critical of ourselves. I remember on the school committee, we would go through our self-evaluation, and we would sometimes be critical of ourselves. And I'd like to be a little critical of the board, not any individual members, but just a little bit of history, what I think has happened, because the bottom line is, increasing the hours and the salary for the fire chief is a hot topic in this town. And there's some political connotation to it, there's economic ones, there's also morale issues. And I'm sitting down, trying to think this through in the last week or so, going through my notes and trying to understand it all, and I can say that a lot of it is our fault on the Board of Selectmen, not because of any malicious reason, only because of lack of experience. We changed the law on how we manage this fire department from a weak chief law to a strong chief law, and we didn't do a great job in implementing. So, I'm gonna share some thoughts with you, I, I wrote them down, and I'm really excited about the future. And I'm excited about the fact that we're gonna move forward in January. And I think that we're gonna, we're gonna find our answers. So, let me read this for you, because it's just my thoughts that I've collected, and if you'll just indulge me, uh, it will be a little critical, but it's critical of the institution of the Board of Selectmen, not any individuals. Because what we've done, how we've voted for things, that's the problem. I'd like to share with you several thoughts. I believe that this board has committed a series of missteps in the implementation of, of our new fire chief law. And so, here's a little bit of history. For several years, our fire department was managed with a part-time fire chief who had minimal hours, and this was a suitable arrangement, because he was substantially supported by a management entity called the Board of Fire Engineers. With the Board of Fire Engineers as the leading authority, working under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, the town was very well-served with a part-time fire chief. Now, in 2013, the Fire Board of Engineer-based model of management was replaced with a single fire chief management model, meaning one person, by a vote of the people at town meeting. The so-called strong chief law was cited as the basis for the change, and there was very little debate and planning for it. There were no committees formed, no studies conducted, and no transition plan put in place. Literally overnight, by one vote of the people, we assumed a totally new way of managing the fire department, of which nobody in Groveland had any experience with. So, that's the history. So, here we are in 2014, and we're struggling. Number one, the first item of error that this board, as an institution, has committed, in my opinion, is that we've ignored the political divisions that still exist within the department. These divisions continue to threaten the viability of our volunteer call model that has served our town well for many decades. The second item, the second misstep, was to attempt to alleviate those divisions by delegating completely the task of implementing a new job description for the strong chief. Embedded in the job description was the same hours to work for the new position that was allocated to the old position. This is flawed, because the new position is tasked to a single person with sweeping powers of control, whereby the previous position was one that was substantially aided by both the Fire Board of Engineers and the Board of Selectmen, and in which those powers were widely distributed. It stands to reason that the number of hours to complete a task by one person, who is helped along by two boards, should be far less than a person that is now tasked to complete substantially those tasks alone. Notwithstanding that in both situations, an additional level of support is the officer corps of the department. The third and the most serious misstep, again, of this board, not any individual, no disrespect to anyone, but again, as an institution, the way we voted, the third and most serious misstep was the current appointment was, to some minor degree, a political appointment. Though no fault of his own, the current fire chief was selected not only for his qualifications and commitment to the town, but also because it was politically favored. The root of this is also attributed to those who advocated for the change in fire chief law and rushed into it, put it on a town warrant without any serious discussion or study. This is not an indictment of any board, as I believe that the actions and vote of a board are above all individuals. However, I will take responsibility for my participation on this board for these missteps, and fully prepared to move forward with actions to correct them and to be sure that our town is made whole. I also believe that Chief Lay is highly motivated and qualified to move forward beyond the din of politics and continue on a course to restore the department's morale and initiate a management plan that will make our department more efficient and superbly aligned to protect our townspeople from the perils of fire, human error, and natural disasters. It is the board's duty to enable him with the tools and the resources to accomplish this. I'm also hoping to see all fire department personnel collaborate, not only with the chief, but also this board, as these are the only two authorities left under the new law that was rushed into our reality without any thought. And so, to this end, I will not make any motion tonight to increase the hours to work for the chief's position, but I want my colleagues on this board, I respectfully ask my colleagues on this board to reflect long and hard on how we are to correct our own missteps. What I will do is return at a future meeting, sooner rather than later, and make a motion to increase the hours to a certain degree that I believe will correctly align the chief's substantial role to fulfill his legal obligations under the new law that the townspeople have voted for. I will also ask the chief to immediately engage with this board in contract negotiations, so that the hourly adjustment is made within the context of an executed contract. Subsequent to that, we, this board, we must redraft and revote that portion of the job description to reflect the required increase in hours to work that is negotiated. I'm asking my board, the chief, and all members of the department to honor this process by supporting it publicly and privately. I'm asking also that we take this opportunity to, in the new year, to align, once and for all, a proper implementation of a new law so that the will of the people is fully realized without prejudice. If for some this requires a leap of faith, so be it. Let's take that leap together, because it's clearly in the town's best interest to do so. For all of us, this must be the only standard. Thank you. I'll submit this as part of the minutes, so that the board can choose to approve it or amend it in the next two weeks.
So, there's no discussion on it?
There certainly can.
Okay.
First of all, I, I take offense to some of the things you just said, because I sat for many years with Bill Dark, Don Greeney, former firefighter, and, um, we put this process together to, after the Board of Fire Engineers came to us and said that they no longer wanted to be the Board of Fire Engineers, and how we were gonna move ahead, we put a process together that, maybe we had fourteen people apply, we interviewed several people for the job, we narrowed it down to maybe six or seven, and then four. I thought we had done a pretty good job. We knew there were going to be hiccups and bumps in the road with the change, there always is. And I, for one, think that Chief Lay did his very best for several months now to try to work with everybody, the entire fire department. We acknowledge the good work that they all do, he's trying to get training, education. He's been doing it, it's fourteen hours a week, I guess nobody could do this. I think that's, your statement was very strong. Joe, you seem to be acting on your own and not with the board, and you're going to every meeting you can get to, you're working with all sorts of other committees, and assuming that you can move ahead and do this kind of thing without bringing Bill and I into the loop. When I first became a selectman many years ago, I remember Bill Dark sitting one night, because we did have somebody else on the board that was kind of out there on their own, doing whatever they wanted. They had an audience that they could see every day, and Bill Dark said, "If you're not talking to all of us, don't assume what you're hearing from one person is something that we all agree upon." I don't think, you know, you keep talking about the political ramifications of this. Yeah, maybe some people did get hurt in the process, because they thought they were the better candidate. because they thought they were the better candidate. But two of us voted, three of us voted, and Bob Lay became the fire chief. I don't know if Bill Dunn wants to make a statement or not, but I'm tired of things happening, and I'm hearing them on the street, and we're not part of it. And I say, "I don't know, I can't answer that question for you. I don't know what's happening." But I think Bob Lay has done a lot of work, and he's brought all his ideas to us. And I know, I mean, I live in the South Potter Town, I know about the South Groveland Fire Station. I know those guys do a great job. And that's something we said to Bob, "Let's bring everybody together." I had an opportunity just recently with, I'm a person that lived in this community all his life, since he was a little boy wanted to be on the fire department. And he was at the cell station, his dad was a captain. And he just passed away. And I'll tell you, the Groveland Fire Department made a presentation for him along with the Haverhill Fire Department, and he received all the honors he should have received. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll make a brief statement. I wasn't involved in Chief Lay's contract negotiations. I am a type of person, as Chief Lay knows, we can leave the room, we can have a discussion, we can shake our hand, and we can be friendly. I'm only trying to sit here and put in front of the town people the best thing for the town and what makes sense. Trying to ask you the questions, I'm not trying to be critical toward you. And not that I'm saying this rudely, we have what we have, you're the chief, someone's voted. We do need to have a contract negotiation, I think we need to make it right. And that's how I feel. And I think it can be done right, I think we all can work and we can get it done. You know, I'm gonna look out for the best interest of the town, the taxpayers, that's all I'm here for, and I'm not here to hurt you by no means. And I think we can do it. And I think that you, I will tip my hat to you, since I've been here, since May, I've seen what you've done, you're trying, you're working, you're coming in with the programs and what have you. I don't have a problem with it. Definitely wouldn't wanna make a decision tonight, I'd like to sit down with my colleagues and talk about it, not be critical about it, and that's all I ask.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do I get to?
Sure, I guess.
Of course you do.
Four minutes left, hard stop, 7:30. At times, it feels like we're in violent agreement. Okay? Joe, you said so much that I couldn't make a lot of notes against it. But I, the only comment I will make was that the part-time fire chief, John Clement, did a good job under the Board of Fire Engineers, got what you paid for. That job description for that job paled in comparison to what mine says. John was not substantially aided by the Board of Fire Engineers. So all the things that you require from me in my job description, they did not have, they did not deliver, they didn't design it, they didn't implement it, it didn't exist. Okay? So I'll say it again. John did a pretty good job with the cards he was dealt, but the Board of Fire Engineers did not support him to the degree that you make it sound like this was a, you know, wonderful model. It's an antiquated model, the community's moving from it, this management by committee. Well, I don't know, what should we do? Let's wait till the end of the month, we'll have a meeting, we'll figure out what we should do. There's no way to run a fire department, you need a fire chief that can make decisions. And I think you all understood that. That's what the Fire Engineers, the Board of Fire Engineers community a year ago and said, "You should get rid of us, it makes no sense." Okay, the chief's running the department, anyhow, we just come in and sign bills the end of the month. I used to sit through those meetings. They rarely lasted more than an hour. You can read those minutes as far back as you would like. So what they delivered pales in comparison to what's going on today. Okay? It's the 21st century fire department, and I think we're on pace, we're on track, we're getting it done. But there's a lot to build in a very little time. So, Joe, thank you for the comments, and Betty and Bill, thank you.
One thing I had, I had said when I came on the board originally is it's tough for me, being a selectman, in trying to make decisions for a fire department which I know nothing about.
You're getting it, you're getting it.
Every day, you know what I'm trying to say? But you don't feel comfortable, you gotta make sure you're doing the right thing, you know what I'm saying? You gotta understand it.
You don't have to make decisions for me, that's.
You know what I'm trying to say?
You need to ask me questions, and I need to give you answers.
A big decision would be have the chief, you know, a good chief, you know what I'm trying to say? And have the model the chief needs to work with, that's all I'm saying. So it is a big decision, and that's why I ask the questions I ask. And I think it makes sense, you know what I'm saying? And that's all I'm looking to do.
I think it's the consensus of the board to negotiate with you, we don't have a signed contract with you. Is that, are you amenable to that?
We have a signed contract today.
Right now, he does, yeah.
Okay. So we have a contract. And that contract says that we, you know, we renegotiate, and we should. And I was told last year by the board, this happens before town meeting. That's where we are, it happens at budget time, that is now, and that's what we're doing.
So we'll schedule you in, because like I said, I think it's important for Denise to receive budget information from all departments so that we know what we can negotiate with. And I'll look forward to doing that, I think, I think the three of us will look forward to doing that.
As do I.
I am pleased that you came in. And you've told us the same thing, time and time again, what we need, what we need to do. And I appreciate that. I'm sure that we can work something out. I know you've looked within your budget to find monies for training because you value training for all your men on the department. And I look forward to working with you in the near future to get this, you know, we're ahead of schedule, we usually lag in behind, but I think that we can come up with something that will be palatable to everybody. That's, that's my opinion.
So as, as a board, should we meet, the three of us sometime, and then meet back with Chief Lay, talk about ourselves, or how do you wanna work it?
I'm gonna look to Denise for guidance on how we should handle this so we don't violate anything.
So you can meet an executive session to discuss contract negotiations. So you could do that as a board, and then you could invite the chief in to discuss his contract specifically.
It's your option to do it openly also, but I think that Bill's idea, I think, is very valid. At least the initial one, let's have, let's have an executive session, the four of us, with Denise, and then...
We've done some of both in the past. Executive session is gloves off.
Oh yeah, it's bloody.
Executive session is...
I have two different presentations always, one for, you know, Republican, one for the three of you. Thank you. Now it's school vacation, and I'm headed.
Good, enjoy.
I'm headed to the mountains, yes I am.
Good for you. See you later, bye-bye, thank you. Hi Larry.
Our timing is impeccable, 7:30.
Here we go. Is everybody here for the same agenda item?
That's a good point, I think so.
Charlotte, you're representing the Board of Health along with Bob. Yeah, good, okay. Okay, 7:30, and we're going to talk about 441 Main Street, alleged, key word, alleged, violations to be discussed with the Building Inspector and Zoning Board. We've invited Planning Board, Board of Health, we've invited Mr. Harper, but we've heard from his lawyer, he's not able to be here this evening. And the neighbors have come in who have some issues to discuss. If everybody could come down front, that would be great. Come on, it's not like church, you can get up close.
She had brought a desk for you.
Diane, you wanna sit up front? Sure.
I didn't have to clean my glasses, I can see you now.
Thanks for everybody coming out tonight, I know everybody's kind of had a little jet lag going on, if you call it that, from the holidays. We've had conversations, different people, it's had a matter that seems to need to be resolved without anybody insulting anybody else or pointing fingers. I know people are disappointed with the Board of Selectmen, they think we should be able to do something to make things right, but that's why the neighbors have had complaints. I'm sure you've received them, Pat, right?
No.
You haven't received any neighborhood complaints?
No.
None?
One.
One complaint, okay. Phone calls, written?
Numerous complaints just from, from one individual, we haven't heard from other...
One individual, not one single call, nobody's come in, no letters, no...
Before anybody speaks, would they make sure they come to the mic and identify themselves and state their address to make sure everybody lives in the community has a vested interest in what's going on in the community? Mr. Harper said he can't make it this evening, and John Christopher is not going to be here this evening for him.
Correct, they sent a response.
They did. Do we just ask people what's going on, what's wrong, what they want us to fix? Or how do we get into this without getting ourselves in hot water with anybody?
Well, I think, Pat, have you seen the, this document?
Yes.
So this is really what the board wants to discuss this evening. So can you address the items on here to the board?
Does Pat have a copy of this?
If you wanna ask me questions, then go from there.
What do you think, gentlemen?
I mean, I'll start asking the question, Pat.
And please, Bill, let them know that you do serve on the zoning board.
I do serve on the zoning board.
As an alternate, I believe.
As an alternate. And one of the question, one of the big concerns in the town of Groveland is that I hear, being a board member and living in the town and being a selectman, is that a lot of people get the misconception that the zoning board members are supposed to uphold the law. They're not. Am I correct?
Right.
You are the one that uphears the law, the complaints or whatever.
I'm the zoning enforcement officer.
So I don't think, me as a selectman, I can even answer any of this. I can try to bring the people in, put them together, and let them talk about it or whatever. But the town people, the people in the town, or whoever it is that put these people together, they don't feel that they're being heard. And my question to you would be, have you taken any of these? Have you gone down there? Have you talked to anyone down there? Have you had any response to this?
Many, many times. If you want me to go, first of all, the lighting was, is one of the issues. I've been down there several times over the lighting, talked to Mr. Harper about the lighting. He's redirected the lights that were shining outward, downward. And the lighting, the streetlights and the skeetow lights are much brighter than any lights that I found from... I came across the bridge, and I stopped on the side, and I looked out over from the bridge at one time. And the only light you can really, really see is the private skeetow. I mean, that's really, if anybody would have a complaint, that would be a complaint, but that's been going on for years.
Yes, we've all, we've all looked at the private skeetow.
When you drive down Waft Drive and Waft Lane, you notice the streetlights. And then way, way in the distance, you notice small lights that illuminate for night for security purposes. And I don't know if everybody realizes, Mrs. LaFrance's house doesn't even face as the lumber. It faces the side street. Her side entrance, the gable inn, faces that. And then Mr. Harper has a fence up. In front of the fence is these very, very tall evergreens, many of them. I have never been in the house, so I couldn't tell you from that point of view or from the outside. I, I don't see how all these lights complaints can possibly be coming in.
Pat, the evergreens, were they recently planted there?
Pardon?
Were the evergreens recently planted there?
They've been in there for years and years and years.
But were there some additional ones planted?
As the...
This week?
Eric Harper put some on his property. I'm talking about the ones right on the side there.
You're talking about the trees, the overgrowth along the side of the road?
Exactly.
The big tall trees and the overgrowth. And Betty's talking about the trees that Eric recently put in the berm to try to help the neighbors.
Right, yes, that's true.
So is that for privacy, for noise, or for lighting? What is that supposed to...
Basically for privacy, for, you know, if you wanna call it for sound, for lighting, for beautifying it, you know. Do you want me to go on?
Sure.
The other complaint was the number of employees. Mr. Harper employs one manager. That's not to say, this contractor's there, they're putting a roof on now, there's three or four guys, I've been down there several times. There was a man in there lettering a vehicle, one of the vans. I guess somebody, one of the contractors hired him to do some lettering on it. There's people in and out at various times. If I owned a unit there and I got to the job, went there in the morning and got to the job and decided, "Oh my God, I forgot my whatever tool, I'm not allowed to go back and pick it up." I mean, you know, I would think I...
What are the hours of operation? The hours, the hours of operation?
Seven to seven, six days a week.
Seven AM to seven PM.
That's not seven days a week.
Six days a week.
May I ask a question, though, and it might be more for the zoning board? Does that permit the seven to seven, does that encompass construction on the property or just the active tenants and the business itself?
Construction is, is...
Can you give your name, please?
Tom Wakefield, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The construction is something that is above and beyond the actual special permit. That, that's just, you know, the work dictates that and the weather. But no, that's not part of the seven to seven.
So construction may occur outside of that time period?
Correct. Now, you know, some towns and municipalities and others that I have worked in have had restrictions as to towns, as of the times, but Groveland doesn't have that, so.
Thank you. Groveland doesn't have any hours of, any construction hours?
I couldn't find any, any one, no.
So if somebody were out mowing their lawn at 10 o'clock at night, so be it?
Yeah.
So part of that project would be the growing pains of the building of it for the neighbors, the growing pains of that development. Once it's developed, once it's done, then that should calm down.
That's correct. Then, then it would refer to the seven, seven, six days a week.
There's, there's always a problem, whether it be a house, a large project, White Stone Village, wherever it might be, when it first starts, the neighbors are used to things the way they were. Especially Elsie Lumber, that's been two and a half years that there hasn't been anything going on. So it's been very quiet. Then all of a sudden, all this outsheds being taken down, things being moved and all that, there's a lot of activity because it's under the construction phase. Once that's over, then we get into the regular hours.
Enforcement of regular times.
Exactly.
But, but we also have to...
Can you state your name?
Brenda Skeena, I work for Pat Skeena. But we also have to have a little bit of, I'm not sure if compassion is the right word. Like he said, somebody could go out on a job or be called out on a job and have to run to their unit to get something. Say they're a plumber, and there's an emergency situation, and they need to run to that storage unit on a Sunday to grab a tool. That may happen.
Of course.
I mean, I don't think we can say that it's never going to happen, so.
I think it's reasonable to say it's going to happen.
Not having people out there working on vehicles and making a ton of noise, but there may be some activity, some light activity on a Sunday or after hours.
In the, I don't have it in front of me, but in the original decision, I don't know how that was addressed. I don't wanna comment because I'm on the board, so I wouldn't wanna comment, you know what I mean?
One of, one of the, if you want me to go on, one of the other problems, parking of vehicles... One of, one of the, if you want me to go on, one of the other problems, parking of vehicles. Nobody that rents a unit is going to park their vehicle way down in the back. There's no literature that I've seen that says they have to park their vehicle. They're going to drive up to their unit to unload, load, do whatever they're doing. They're not going to park their vehicle down the back. They, they don't stay there. From what I've seen, every time I've been there, they don't stay there for hours and hours. They're in and out. I've gone there and I've seen a renter drive in and a half an hour later, he's driving out, you know?
We've had, we have some records from the Groveland Police Department that they have made calls there because somebody's made a call to them that things are going on on holidays, noise complaints on Veterans Days, Veterans Day. We're just trying to find a solution that will keep, you know, the neighbors have been, they feel infringed upon. So that's what we're looking for.
We received a call- Excuse me. We received a call not this Sunday, last Sunday. Within 20 minutes of the call, I was out there stating that there were people working there. Again, I went down the Waft Drive in Waft Lane. I didn't see anything from there. I drove in. The gates were all locked and closed. I don't even have a pass to go in. I would have to call Mr. Harper to have him let me in. I drove around. I stayed there for approximately 15 minutes and nothing was going on. Very extremely quiet.
Pat, if, if someone places a call with the police department and, for after hours or something, do you get notified of that?
I don't believe I do.
Okay, so we need to make sure that if someone's contacting the police department, that you should be notified after the fact that a, a report was logged, so that you can check up on it?
They have called me in the past about other things, but I have not got one from them over this issue.
See, we do have a packet here from the Groveland Police Department about incidents, about calls that were made. And they're responding to those calls.
But most of the calls are noise complaints that I see, right?
So people have made calls and I'm sure that the police didn't call you up and tell you they're going over there?
No. Most of the time, actually, on Sunday, I'm not even in town. I'm either up in Maine or New Hampshire or something. And Mr. Duncan addressed to that because I ran across him up there.
So who's in town? Bill's away, Yar away, the chief's away, who's in town?
I just got access to the town email on my home computer, so I can check it.
Okay.
And we get our, our many emails on the weekend.
No more long weekend.
I have a few thoughts.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you.
I think I'm allowed Sunday off.
I think you are too. I was kidding, you know that.
Thank you.
I have, I have a few thoughts. Thank you, Betty and Bill. There's, whether, whether a violation is real or imagined or alleged, there are three types. One of them is aesthetic, you know, piles of stuff that shouldn't be there, trees that should be up, you know, the direction of a light and the brightness of a light. Another type of, of a violation, again, whether it's imagined or real or alleged, is a code violation. You know, a building that shouldn't be where it's supposed to be.
Right.
Or where it is, for example, or a building the wrong size according to the original plan. And then the third type of violation is a permit. So if you have a business that's not acting the way they should be acting, for example. So we can criticize each other because we're in a position of responsibility. We're the Board of Selectmen and, and you and your position as well. So I believe, and you can rebut this if you want, but I believe that the problem that we are having at this property is that we, this is a very complex property, a project. It has aesthetic, code violation, and permit violation potential. And the permit that you issued is not sharp enough to be able to catch all of this stuff. You can't be there seven days a week. No one's asking you to. So I will go back to my thought, and I want your opinion, your professional opinion on this. If every business went through the permitting process, and if every building had its own permitting requirement, we would be able to stay on top of this project in a way that would possibly address problems before they even happened. That's just my opinion. Because the general permit that you issued makes it impossible for any human being, any one of us or any entity, to, to supervise every bit of activity that's going on down there. So that's what I think the problem is. Aesthetic, code, and permit violations have occurred, may continue to occur because we have the wrong type of permit. We should have had individual permits for every building and/or every business going through there should be permitted by going through the zoning board, for example. That's just my thought.
One of my, um-
Well, if you don't mind, if, if the building inspector would respond to that, and Bill, I'm sure you've got some ideas as well.
First of all, he doesn't have one blanket permit.
Okay.
He has three. He came in three different times for the building up front, for the buildings down and back, for roofing, reshingling, a demolition permit for taking down all those buildings. That, it's completely wide open on the side. The face is Waft Lane. It, it, there's nothing there. It's empty, empty. The, the buildings are way over on the opposite side. It's just, I, I've never measured, measured it, but it has to be the length of a football field, I, I'm guessing. I don't know, but that's what it looks like, the length of a football field away from Waft Lane.
Could you list them for me again? The, the building up front?
The different permits.
The, the three different permits you said that one of?
He has a, a permit for-
The front building?
Front building.
Yeah.
Has a permit for roofing. He has a demolition permit. And then he had like a general permit to do various works on the property. So actually, come, I didn't count, when I said three, I didn't count the demolition permit.
Demolition, so there's four, okay, got it. That's fine, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The logs have permit good for?
I'm sorry.
Is there a time limit on that, like a demolition permit? No?
The demolition permit was just for taking down those pole lines. That was, that was a-
Part of my, um, what I wanted to say tonight was, and I'm kind of going to go on what Joe said. I'm in agreement with Joe. I think the prob, that property got off on the wrong foot. I think it's very well known. I would like to see, coming out of this, every one of those buildings has a number on it. And if something's going to happen to one of those buildings, I would like to see a building permit pulled on 109, C 109. And from now on out, I don't know if we can do it, but that would be my suggestion to help prevent this. What he has going on, clean it up, under the building permit, done. Any new work, it's going to be on C 107. He has come in and say, Pat, I'm doing this, that, and the other thing to the building. Pat, issues on my permit. He has to go to all the different departments throughout the town. We put a stop order in place. That's how, I think, would be one way to help prevent this.
See, we never had to do that on Whitestone Village. And there was Phase One and Phase Two. That's a tremendous project. We got absolutely no complaints with any of the-
But you know why, Pat? Do you know why? Because you had one use. Over here, you have many uses so far. You had one use, you had one residential use on Whitestone. Over here, we have multiple uses.
Nichols Village had the main building, all the cottages.
Yep.
A shed up back to store the equipment and all that, a garage.
Right.
Shop.
A shop, I mean, that was, Nichols Village was the largest project. Larry Kelly next to the apartment was another large project that went on. All of those projects, we, we had no, no problem. And there was only one permit issued on those.
But I think-
Well, there was two on Whitestone because it was Phase One.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get at on that particular project was, it was building residential units. It was kind of like, throughout that whole project, you were building the same thing in different phases. Over here, it's altogether different.
Let me, what did we do to address each unit next door? We had a separate paper that addressed that particular unit.
We had it by the square footage of the unit and how many, and how many units were in each building.
On Larry Kelly's building, we did a separate piece of paper that addressed, it wasn't a separate permit. We did a separate piece of paper that, I'd have to look in the files, I don't remember. But it was a separate document that addressed each one of the units, not a special permit for each one. And that's what we did there to keep, you know, because different ones got done at different times and all that. So maybe that would work.
I just think we need to-
I don't think Mr. Harper would be opposed to coming in and having me make a card for, I haven't talked to him about it, but he's never been opposed to anything of us and to do so far.
Would you like to speak, Denise?
Yes, if I'm, I just want to, I want to thank the boards and committees that are here. I actually have a question for you all. Without going into specifics, what's the process from each of your boards and committees? I know some of you have meetings next week, so can you just address, so we know where you stand with this 441 Main Street? So I'll start with the zoning board because you're right here in front of me.
Tom Wakefield, currently, we have, based on a letter from the fire chief, and I believe it's number 13 of the special permit, allows the Board of Appeals to initiate a recall of the special permit. And that was done, and we've had a couple of meetings, and it's currently tabled until the January 7th meeting. And I just received today another application for, for 441 Main Street to revise the original application. So the way it works is that the first, the first meeting of the recall procedure, the fire chief stated his concerns, the applicant responded, the neighbors responded to the recall public hearing. Then the public hearing was closed. And at that point, all future meetings that discussed that, and there was a couple of them, was not open to public input because the public, the public hearing had been closed, and it was only for discussion as to what, what the board was going to do relative to the information they received. Now, in the January meeting, we have a new proposal, which will have a public hearing, which then the neighbors could, could talk about. I have not looked at it, I just got it today, I haven't looked at it. So Mr. Harper has a proposal before the board, which is an amendment to the existing, which there'll be a public hearing on. And, and the neighbors would then be able to have input. And then the board will take action either on the proposed, and if that doesn't get a positive result, then we would, we would revert to the recall provision that, that we had initially enacted and then take a vote on that. And I suspect, it appears now that we're, we're at the point now where I think the January 7th meeting is going to be the meeting to resolve the issues with the board and the special permit requirements.
So your, your method of resolving potentially could be just re-engaging in a new process, is it fair to say? Or an amended process?
That's right. We, that, that's what happened for two meetings. We, we were negotiating to try to, to see how we could get, get them in compliance. And, and we weren't able to, to resolve it to the point where it was either vote to recall it, which, which I thought maybe was not the prudent thing to do at that time. So there's a new application coming before the board, and like I say, that, that's going to be presented. And, and the board will then decide whether to vote for it, against it, amend it. And if that doesn't, if that doesn't prevail, then, then we would revert back to the original recall provision and then take a vote on that.
And, and what happens to the four permits that have already been issued if you engage in that process and there's a continuance? In other words, there's a, you, you're not going to issue a recall, but you're going to say, okay, let's move forward. What, what happens? Do you, do you reissue these permits that are, that are done? Not you, but does the building inspector?
If you were to read section, let's see, I believe it is section 1500, General Administration.
What is it, 1500?
1500, yep. And, and this talks about the Board of Appeals.
Mm-hmm.
And the duties of the Board of Appeals, and the duties of the zoning enforcement officer. I think that should answer your question as to what would happen.
Do you have that right there?
Yes, I do.
Is there any way the three of us could get a copy or the four of us, including Denise? Would we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
It's probably on our website.
You think we can, with the Massachusetts General Laws?
If you'd like, I could read it. I, I, I mean, if you'd like me, I, I could read this if you'd like. I'm not, I'm good at that.
Okay, why don't you do that?
Yeah, well, under General Administration, 1501, the zoning enforcement officer. 1501.1, the Board of Selectmen shall on, in, in April of each year, appoint a zoning enforcement officer and other enforcement agents, karma, who shall hold the office for a term of one year or until such time as successes are appointed. The compensation for the zoning enforcement officer shall be determined at an annual town meeting preceding, preceding appointments. 1501.2, he shall not be interested in any contract or in finishing of materials for any building. 1501.3, the Board of Selectmen shall have power to discharge the enforcing officer for failure to perform his duties and fill any vacancies in the office. 1501.4, he shall keep a record of all business of the department, which record and other books and papers relating to the transactions of the department shall be open at all times to the inspection of the selectmen and shall submit to them a yearly report of such business and such other reports as may require. 1501.5, except as otherwise provided, this bylaw shall be enforced by the enforcing officer. He shall approve no application for any kind of plans or specifications of intended use which are not in all respects in conformity with this bylaw. 1502, penalties, 1502.1, any person or entity who violates, A, any provision of the zoning bylaw, or B, any of the conditions under which a permit, special permit or zoning variance is granted. C, any decision rendered by the Zoning Board of Appeals shall be fined not more than $300 for each offense each day that such violation continues and shall constitute a separate offense. 1502.2, non-criminal deposition. In addition to the proceedings of the enforcement of the described 1502.1, the provisions of the zoning bylaw may also be enforced by the building inspector by non-criminal complaint pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law 40, Chapter 40, Section 21D. Each day the violation exists shall be deemed as a separate offense. The penalty for violation of any provision of the zoning bylaw shall be as follows. $100 for the first offense, 200 for the second offense, 300 for the third offense and subsequent offense. Okay, now, I'll, I'll read you the, the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals, 1503, 1503.1, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Board of Appeals consisting of five members, three associates, either of whom may be designated by the, by the chairman or the board to sit in the place of any member incapacitated by personal interest, illness, or absence. Who shall act in manners within its jurisdiction under the bylaws. In the manner prescribed in Section 12, Chapter 40A of General Laws, as, as amended in Chapter 808 of the Acts of 1975, and shall serve without remuneration except the clerk of the Board of Appeals, whose compensation shall be regulated by the Board of Selectmen and not to exceed $250 annually. This Board of Appeals shall be appointed according to the methods described in this chapter of General Laws. Now, in answer to your question, I heard that the, the zoning enforcement- I heard that the, the, the zoning enforcement official had talked about talking to Mr. Harper, but, uh, I'm wondering if there's any documentation, because in order to have these typical fines assessed, then, then you'd have to have some type of documentation to, to, uh, initiate that. But that's, that's a separate issue, but, uh, as far as, uh, any other comments about the, the, uh, four forty-one Main Street, I think at this time with, with the pending application would be inappropriate.
That's fair, thank you, that's very good information.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what he just said. Did he say that he heard that the zoning enforcement officer, me, was gonna stop the permit or something? I'm not sure.
I thought we were asking what the recall process. If, if you recalled the special permit-
Yep.
What would our responsiveness then be?
Well, if we recalled the permit, it's, everything stops, period.
My, my question is if, 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 if the recall does not occur, and there is a, um, um, the zoning board will, will, will engage in a new process, what happens to those four permits that were already issued? Do they have to be redone if they start in a new process?
I'm not gonna speak for Pat.
That's my question.
Well, I think that's our question too.
Well, well, I mean-
I mean, we wanna work together.
Yeah, well, well, if, 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 if a recall takes place-
Yeah.
Then it's, everything is dead, that's it. It's, it's, it's back to square one like he hadn't come in. It's, it, the only problem with the recall, and I, I think that the board's reluctant to do that, is that-
Two years in it?
Is that there's a two-year waiting to come back. And, and if it wasn't for that, I think that, that, the first night, there'd have been a recall, and, and that would have happened. But, you know, I think the, there's a misconception that the board doesn't want anything to happen down there, when, when the fact of matter is, we do, it just wants to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
You're waiting for him to come back with an amendment.
He has, he, I, I just received it today, I haven't looked at it, but there is, there's an amended plan that will have a public hearing on, on the seventh.
All right.
And, and if, if, uh, if that gets approved with amendments or whatever, then I, I suspect that the, the permits that were issued would, would be valid.
Still valid, okay.
However, if, if that gets denied, and then we open up the, reopen the, the recall, uh, application, and if that happens to get denied, then everything's off. The permits are, are null and void, at that point, everything's null and void.
And there's a two-year wait?
A two-year wait, period.
Besides coming back to you, we have planning board people here, we have Board of Health people here. What's the process with the applicant having to go before other boards?
Well, it's, it's the part of, part of the, uh, special permit, uh, regu- says that any other boards that, that need, need to have, uh, permits from has to be, uh-
Signed off on?
Signed off on, yeah.
Before they get to you?
Well, 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 not, no, it's, it's, if you did that, nothing would get done. It's, it's sort of, you have to, you have to sort of believe what someone tells you when they're standing in front of you. And so, you, you say that, you know, if you're an aquifer, you have to go to, you know, and, and, and get approval. If you need planning board approval, you need to do that, and it's all, everything is subject to. And conversely, if they went to the planning board first and got approval, that would be subject to going to the, uh, the, uh, Board of Appeals for a special permit. Now, we've had a case where, uh, recently, uh, where, where the planning board did approve a project, and it didn't get special permit, and we had to do the after-effect type thing. And I think you, you might know now, we're, we're in a, you know, we're in a lawsuit over that. But, but, you know, that, that's how it works, it's supposed to, but you can approve, you can approve, either board can approve, uh, subject to, which is sort of a, uh, speeds the process versus, oh, I can't talk to you till you go there, and they don't meet once a month, so you gotta come back and forth. So, uh, as long as things are made subject to, then, then I think that's, that's appropriate.
Jim Freer has his hand.
Yeah, one, one of the things-
Jim, if you can, uh, come sit here and, and state your name and your position with, with the-
Uh, Jim Freer, eighteen Elm Park, uh, Grove and Planning Board.
Thanks, Jim.
One of the things that's, it is a problem, is the Grove and Planning Board will do site plan reviews, and will do them on just about any sort of business or industrial project that's brand new, or in the case of SDs, a rebirth. I'd asked, you know, to get a site plan review done at the first meeting, I believe, of the Board of Appeals, also at this second meeting. Uh, we received the material, uh, last month. We're gonna start the process this month. But it's, it's something very similar to subdivision rules and regulations for residential properties. And it's probably something it should start consecutively with asking for a use before the Board of Appeals. And, uh, it probably would have been done by now. And it would have been something, they would have had a site plan at that point to really work with. It's, it's not gonna be something that's going to have anything to do with the use. And there are multiple uses in the SD property that are going. And that's pretty hard to give out a permit for anything. It's impossible, you know, and I would say never do that. It, it should be, each, each thing should come up separately as they work into these different buildings and everything.
So each building?
Each building, each, each, each use, and, um-
Have you not had a site plan review?
No.
First time around?
No, no. The one problem in, in the current bylaw is the Board of Appeals is under no situation to order the planning board to do it. Now, had they put that in their, um, decision, we would have done it. And we're, we're not gonna argue with them, you know, we would have said yes. We probably should put that in there, that they would have the right to order the planning board to do a site plan review at that point.
It's a great opportunity to fix the process.
As well as we, we would like to do it on our own. Most of the industrial business properties in this town have never had site plan review done with. It's only the newer ones. And it, it is something that you really, you really need to, to have. I mean, here we do subdivision, you know, plans, and there's three separate ones.
Do you, uh, do you agree-
As we go forward.
Do you agree with this?
Mm-hmm.
You take a project of that magnitude and that size, and it wasn't presented in the beginning to be that project of that size. But at any rate, even the mass of that land, I would have thought it should have gone before the plan, the planning board, all the boards, because you have infrastructure, you gotta build the infrastructure, the roads, the piping, the hydrants, the wiring, the plumbing, the whole thing. So, I think the project got off on the wrong foot to begin with, you know, you know what I'm saying? But we, and I've said it, it's getting off of what we're here for tonight, but we need to put in the measures where when a project gets off the ground, it gets off the ground right.
Yeah.
It has to, we have to, if it starts in Pat's office, wherever it's gonna start, we gotta get it started the right way. And I've said it over and over. And in that project, somehow, how it was presented, I don't know, it's not off on the right foot. And there's infrastructure, I mean, the fire, the fire chief, he needs to know what plumbing he needs for those hydrants. He, and you'll send, that, if you wanna talk use, I think the hydrants are more important. I know, I understand you, you do need use, because what's gonna be in there? Is it chemical company, what, you know what I'm saying? So we need to know what the use is, hand in hand with you guys, building your infrastructure. So all parties need to be involved in this process all along together, including the code enforcement officer. Everyone needs to be engaged, and that's what I've been pushing for. I've been pushing for to try and get something in place where a project, I'm not talking about a house, I'm not talking about a shed, I'm talking about one of these projects. Does that mean the code enforcement officer needs to come to the ZBA meeting? I don't know, I mean, that, that's what I'm fighting for.
Well, it's, it's, it's basically what comes first, second, third, and fourth. And, you know, literally, uh, the zoning bylaw tries to do that. The unfortunate problem is, it, it's like boards working together with boards. And, you know, we, we're okay with, you know, okay, we'll take the first bite on this thing. The unfortunate problem is, what if, what if the person is then denied the use?
After they've stopped it down that road.
After he spent all his money on a site plan review. I mean, the only thing I can say that once you go through this, it's gonna diminish the possibility of that, you know, being turned down. Certain uses might be, but other uses won't be.
But-
And, and that's what it is. I mean, when you go through a subdivision control law and you're building a housing project.
If, if you had a-
No, he's being turned down once that underway, there not being.
If you had a piece of property and the use was what the use was in that property prior to, and you're going for a special permit, usually you can't make it more detrimental to what was there.
No.
So you'd, you'd be hard pressed doing that.
It's a pre-existing.
Pre-existing versus what you, if you're gonna try and take Columbia and put a chemical company in there, forget it, you know what I mean? You'd be hard pressed, you, you aren't getting that.
Yes.
So-
I mean, I, I was the one at the first meeting, they were getting kinda hung up on what hours, what days, and I just yelled out seven to seven, six days a week, and he did it. Now, yeah, SDs prior to this was probably seven o'clock in the morning, about five at night at best.
Right.
You know, it was a different operation. But Holbert ran that mill twenty-four, seven in the month of December when we used to get the knockoff on the electric bill years ago. Can you tell you that one?
We had a good idea to do it, just a nice discount.
Mrs. J, I, I don't think it's appropriate to be talking about these details on this. We, we've got an, an application coming up.
Okay, well, we-
Really shouldn't be talking.
But you're, you are asking the question of-
Right, we're just trying to know how to do it better.
Yeah.
Yeah, how should we do this?
I'm not trying to get into the nitty-gritty, I was trying to do an overlay of future projects.
We don't mind being told what to do by the zoning Board of Appeals, we don't mind that. It's a good thing, not a bad thing.
It's a good thing.
Okay. We probably ought to take the new bylaw again and go in and look what we now said, and should we put something in there, the Board of Appeals has the right to request.
Which, uh, general question, which board or commission addresses the aquifer protection? And how do you address it, by a special permit?
Basically, we have that by special permit under the planning board, uh, but, you know, it's, it's something, we, we have engineers that we can hire and everything, and they're the ones doing all that work, we're not, you know, we understand it.
But it is coming out in some, somewhere in the-
It is coming out, okay, the, you know, we need the conservation in on this stuff now as well.
Of course, it's on the river.
Because when you look at it, we're, we're getting into a situation in this town now, we don't have meadows anymore. We got uphill and we got downhill, we got rocks, we got marsh. So, you know, there, there's a lot more going on now when you get into any sort of new development on a parcel of land.
So land disturbance, storm, train-
Yeah.
And water protection-
Oh, yeah.
That's all being, that's being reflected somewhere in the permitting process? It's not the, in, in any of these four that the building-
It would, it is under the subdivision rules and regulations for, for residential, but also a site plan review will pull this up.
Okay, there you go. I mean, we just spent, as a town, we just spent a small fortune of money buying land to protect the aquifer. So I would hope anytime we develop something, we've got inside the permitting process a way to make sure that we're not poisoning our water.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the conservation signs off on the sign-off sheet.
Right.
I'm just trying to understand, that's all.
Mike's been down there with these people.
That's what I like to address, the sign-off sheet's supposed to address those problems. The problem is, I think various boards and individuals will come in, whether it be the planning board, Board of Health, whoever I send them to, I think they think they're supposed to sign that immediately. If they don't have the documentation that they're supposed to have, tell the person that they need to see whatever before they sign the sign-off sheet, 'cause when that sign-off sheet comes back to me, if the various people that I have checked off have signed it, I think it's okay with them, you know? But I think they think they need to sign it immediately. They don't need to sign that immediately, especially when you're dealing with a project of that magnitude, you know?
And they may be a board that has other individuals with different opinions. We just have one opinion.
Right.
And the, and the other thing too is, and we're getting off with tonight, but another thing would be, if every board gave you the decision of what they found on a project, and you read it and understood it, you could abide by it.
I don't get that, I just get the signature.
That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to always do, is trying to get you to get it.
That's an excellent point.
And I will just say, the board did about two months ago, send a letter out to all boards and committees, I believe you have copied on it, that they've asked people to really review the documentation before they're signing off on permits.
Absolutely.
So, they have asked for cooperation from boards to do that.
I never put a time limit on, there's builders that come in to me and say, gee, I need this, I need that, you know? Uh, only time there was emergency on a roof, that a lady, her roof was leaking, and she came in to me about it. I said, listen, here's all the paperwork, get it going, tell your roofer he can get doin', get going, and correct, it was during that heavy rain and all that, but that very rarely happens, you know?
I was, um, I-
Can we just-
Okay, sorry.
Can we just, I just wanna follow up with the boards. Can we hear from the Board of Health while you're here, what your position is on it?
From the Board of Health?
You'll be here, you'll be here. Bob O'Hanley, Board of Health and Planning Board. And, uh, I sent a letter back to you stating that at this moment, the zoning enforcement officer has full authority to stop any infractions down there. But on January sixth, uh, four forty-one, Eric Hopper's gonna be presenting the, uh, plan for the site review, and he wanna occupy it. And those procedures should have been done before he started any of this work. And, uh, it will be done properly now, and every board is contacted for input. And we just got a set of plans, and I believe you left a set of plans at the, uh, Town Clerk's office? Larry did you?
Yeah, yes.
All right, I've been going through that on my own, just to go up on it. It's a, uh, a sheet showing every building and then the proposed uses. Each one of those uses have to go to the different boards, like the Board of Health, like Conservation, like the Water and Sewer, because they're the primary water lockifier protectors along with the Board of Health. We need to know what's going in each and every building, and get the input from these boards so that we can make the correct decision. And all this should have been done. Nichols Trust, Roland Commons, everything was done through a site plan and a subdivision plan, and it was overseen, and all the input from the boards was gathered, just like this should have been, before it got out of hand like it is now. Now, my question would be, can the zoning board amend it after we go through everything and see what they propose to put in there, get the input properly, and then recommend to the zoning board what we think should be going down there, and let them amend it if they need to amend what they already gave permission to do and future things, so.
Well, this is a-
The process has to be done correctly, and the, the, uh, procedures have been there, they just weren't followed.
The, this is a great opportunity for us to learn from this, so that's a very important question. Maybe Tom might be able to a- a- answer it. Again, just generally, it's not specific to the app.
And generally, I just, I, I would ask, uh, through the chair, that the planning board give me a reference to the zoning border, uh, the zoning ordinance that requires a site plan for this project. It's an existing project that was subject to section one oh six point one of the zoning ordinance, and, uh, uh, in, in my thirty years' experience of reading zoning ordinance, I don't see any requirement in there for me.
Isn't it one oh eight point one?
One oh six point one. Halfway down through on one oh six point one talks about, uh, uh, change of use. And, and nowhere in that particular, uh, reference is there a mention of a site plan review on an existing project. So, uh, if anyone here, uh, from the planning board has that, I certainly would appreciate the numbers so that, uh, we could utilize that as-
You could reference that?
Exactly, because, uh, if you were to read the section one oh six point one, there is no provision in existing non-conforming uses for a site plan review. So, um, I take offense to the comments that, that we did not follow procedure because we did.
Can you s- can-
It doesn't say they-
It doesn't say, that's correct.
That's, that's, and that's absolutely correct.
It doesn't say it, it's not implied?
Should say that.
It's not implied, or is it explicit that it has to happen? So don't sit here, up here, or here and say that we should have done it-
No, we agree with- No, we agree with it.
And imply that the board should have done it, and Bob O'Hanley behind me saying that the procedures weren't followed because, don't blow smoke up me because that's not the thing to do to me.
We're not here to argue.
Yeah, okay?
We're not going to. We're just trying to find a solution.
We did it the right way, and, and what happened was that the person didn't do as we had directed to be done and what he said he was gonna do, and I'll leave it at that. But I'm not gonna sit here and, and have someone tell me that our board didn't do it correctly when there's nothing in this ordinance that requires it to be done.
All right.
Am I clear on that?
Do we have an impasse on that?
No, I don't think we got an impasse, Ms. Chairman. I mean, that's a fact. It is not in the ordinance.
But we're in agreement that even if it's-
Mr. Frey said it should be there, but it's not. Okay.
What, what, what should be doesn't, doesn't require the board to do.
Right.
Okay? So, if you want it in there, it has to be in there. But don't come to a public meeting and tell all the people in town that the zoning board of appeals didn't do it correctly because we should have said to them, it's not a requirement.
But we're in agreement that even if it's not a requirement, we're gonna definitely go with it.
Well, be that as it may, I'm telling you-
At that time.
Well, not at that time, maybe today it isn't. And when they come before us on the seventh, it still isn't there.
And, and I'll go back to say what I said earlier.
You know, if the applicant wants to do it, as, as a goodwill, uh, on their part, all well and good. But, but is it required? Absolutely not.
But-
So, I'm, I'm really offended that these guys sit behind me and tell me that we didn't do it correctly. Because that is not, that doesn't, it isn't in the ordinance, and we're only there to enforce-
Right.
What's written down, not what we'd like to have.
Well.
Regardless of that, I did, we did contact Eric Harper's lawyer and asked him, can we get it? And they said yes, and it's here.
So, Eric's not here, his lawyer, Mr. Christopher's not here, Larry's here, Larry's the engineer, correct, on the site?
No, I'm a consultant.
Consultants to Mr. Harper?
Not the engineer.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All those submissions have been made to the board of appeals, as Mr. Wakefield said, for an amended special permit, site plan approval, aquifer protection to the planning board. And we're in the process, so Mr. Harper's in the process of putting together a notice of intent to the conservation mission.
Okay. Are those all the people that need to be notified, involved, weigh in on this? Have a, the, the ones that Mr. Ogden just mentioned?
Well, in addition to that- They're on, if you, they're, they're in the, they're in the special permit, and I'll-
How about the name?
Those have been submitted, there's the-
Those, those are over here under, we're here under number eleven of the, uh-
We don't wanna get into too many details because you're gonna hear this the first week of January.
But it says, subject to, uh, if proposal is in the aquifer protection district, the applicant shall meet all requirements as deemed necessary by the Groveland planning board. Okay? It's in here. I'm, I'm, I can tell you, you probably can understand, I'm really offended that someone from the planning board comes into this public meeting and says that the zoning board of appeals didn't, didn't follow the ordinance, because we did follow the ordinance. Okay?
Well, I think that Mr. Frey's agreeing with you that it needs to be put into the verbiage.
Okay, we were misled by the applicant, and, and the applicant now has, has decided to go before the board. This is not a new project, this is a, subject to the section one oh six point one, which is, uh, use of a non-conforming, uh, business, okay? So, uh, I, I'm offended, and, and, and I, I don't like this type of atmosphere. For the money that you're paying me, I really don't need this, okay?
No, we understand your volunteers.
It costs everybody to come down here tonight.
I, I understand.
I'm missing TV programs. Come down here and listen to someone criticize me. I don't like that at all.
Just to clarify something, I wasn't referring to his board, I was referring to Eric Harper not doing the proper procedure. He's got it all blown out of proportion here now.
Well, let's stay in the holiday spirit and how about Michael Lord Dempsey?
Excuse me? You know what, and I wanna make sure the neighbors are included in these next steps. As we move forward to correct anything, I want the neighbors to have a voice. And we have two neighbors, maybe more than that, in the room right now. And I know they've been very involved, and, and the quality of life needs to be taken into consideration.
Mike Dempsey may wanna say something.
Mike, you have your hand up, I'm sorry.
Mike, did you have some comments or some thoughts?
I think it's fair that you hear what conservation has done, for one thing. Um, we've had three informal hearings with Mr. Harper. He-
Can we refrain from using his name over and over again?
Sure, sure. So, we've had three informal meetings regarding the property. We've seen their plans, we've been asked about our advice. Uh, two of those were follow-ups on complaints that we received and made site visits. And, uh, you know, they were attended by the public, so, uh, certainly we've been open to hear about what's going on from, uh, a butters. And, uh, recently, we issued an emergency order to fix a, uh, situation with a broken drainage pipe onto, um, creek next to the property. And the last thing, um, is that we're waiting for a notice of intent filing that we expect in the next month or so for all of the work that's planned within the two hundred foot buffer of the river that is our jurisdiction there and the adjoining creek. So, we, we probably have jurisdiction over-
Is that Johnson's Creek?
Yes. We have jurisdiction, I would say, over about a third of the property that is within the two hundred foot buffer. But besides that, personally, I, you know, I, I know we're meeting on Ja- in January to discuss some of these things. But, you know, I, I think the town needs to get our act together so that we are all working as one. And, you know, I know that's your goal, to do that, because, you know, when a, when a business comes in and they want to come to Groveland, we should be making sure that it's clear to everyone what the process is.
Steps that have to be taken.
And I don't believe it is clear to everyone what the process is, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, appreciate that. Diane?
This isn't his first business in Groveland.
No. She just said it's not his first business in Groveland. But I think we're just talking about this site.
We are, we're talking about four forty-one Main Street.
Do we have another member of the health?
Yeah, if we can just first close the loop, um, on the health side of things. So, we do have a letter from the health agent who went out in September and said that she walked the site with the site manager, and there were no apparent code violations at that time. Has anything changed since that point as far as the board of health is concerned?
No, I have no bad reports.
So, there were some, um, in the, in the write-up we got, there were some board of health issues mentioned in here. But as far as you're concerned, there's nothing, no violations at this point.
At this point.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Okay, I think we've heard from everybody, and we'll wait to see how this plays out when, um, in early January, where we're going to be. And if Eric was, if the applicant, uh, takes all the proper steps to, uh, address what's happening over there, that's, that's what we all want, I believe. With everybody working together. Larry?
I'd make a quick comment. I agree with Mr. Dempsey that there's been a lot of confusion. Part of it is that this was an existing site. The processes that are in your zoning bylaw are pretty much for new construction. You know, you go to, you gotta, to the aquifer protection, stormwater management, it's all for new construction. Everything's there. So, that's something you, you could work into your zoning as far as how do you address an existing property that's changed hands and there's some-
Right.
Renovations going on. Although, I would submit that our renovations minimized what was there, not expanded it.
So, I have a question, and I, 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 I don't, I don't have an answer, and I don't know if anybody does. These boards and commissions are quasi-judicial, they kind of operate on their own. So, how, how do we go around, how do we go about setting a policy or procedure on how things should work? So that if I come to this town and I wanna set up a small industrial park or a subdivision, I have a written something that says, these are the steps you go through. Start A with the town clerk's office, for example, and ask for, you know, blankety-blank. Step two, go to the building inspectors. I mean, is it possible to do that? I mean, how do we do that, or should we be convening a committee to create a policy on how to engage with these independent boards? Because, Mike, that's what you're talking about. We don't have it written down. There's no policy. A hundred years from now, we could have the same problems. We're all gone, we've all learned from this, but we still have the same problem, because no one ever wrote, wrote down, how do you, how do you go from A to Z? Go through this process. Does anybody have a response?
I couldn't make a quick one, because I served as selectman in Georgetown, on the Georgetown planning board. Georgetown finally put in a town planner. And I have to admit, when I was a selectman, I didn't want him to do it. Because it costs a lot of money to have a town planner. But if you go to Georgetown's website, it's much more organized than we were ten years ago when I was there. We set up committees to put together the process and all that stuff. Now, he's, those planners have taken it to, you know, step by step what the process is. You can go in and see somebody and get help on it. Now, it's an expense for the town, but I think it, in Georgetown anyways, avoided a lot of this type of confusion. And it, it is a big step, because it's another full-time employer, employee, and-
Can that duty be folded into a building inspector job description?
They're typically different trainings, building inspectors, more construction and licensed. The planner usually has gone to school for planning, for municipal planning, urban planning, and that kind of stuff.
Is that a full-time position, Larry?
I think in Georgetown, it's, I'm not sure. It wasn't, but it may be by now.
Uh, just, Joe, to answer your question, maybe a little simpler. The, the several towns that I've worked in, in fact, the last one in Palma, Hampshire, has a procedure. It, it wouldn't be too difficult for someone in town to go online, find that procedure, change it around, and make a packet, which would say, if you're coming into the town of Groveland, these are the things. That, that would not take a lot of work to do. I'm sure that with the spare time, you could do that very easily, and, uh-
I have a lot of spare time.
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you don't have to hire anyone. You just, you just look at what other, other municipalities have done, correlate it with what, what has to happen here, and there you go. It's not a-
Where would it start?
Not, not rock. Well, I, I would, I would start with, with looking at Georgetown and, and-
No, no, no. What department here would you start it in?
Oh, I suspect it would be started with, uh, getting an application from the planning board, uh, number one, and then, then, then it's gonna tell you what you need to, to affect that.
Start at the planning board, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but that, but, but if you, if you look at what Georgetown has, I, I think you're gonna probably find out that, uh, if you just take their, their application, change it from Georgetown to Groveland-
The steps that need to be taken.
And then just change a few things that, that, and, and, and maybe in consultation with the planning board to see what has to happen. Uh, that's not a big deal to change it, to make one of those up real quick.
What happens if, um, what happens if someone skips by the planning board and goes to the building inspector, and they start a process? You know, there's gotta be something in place.
I doubt that would ever happen.
She needed a joke.
Hi, I'm Captain Franzen, seven oh one St. Louis Street. Just a quick note on that, a general development-
And you're on the zoning board.
I am, yes. But it's more of a general development. As, um, developers, if you look at it from the other point of view, not from the town point of view, if you look at it from a development point of view, you're not going to invest any money in planning. You're not going to invest any money in conservation unless you've got a special permit from ZBA, which only costs you six hundred and fifty dollars. You go to planning, that's gonna cost a lot of money, you're gonna get an engineer, architect, everybody. Nobody, so everyone is gonna start in ZBA. It's just, that's kind of, I mean, obviously, they go to the town clerk, they get the application, all of that. But I'm just saying, as far as the boards go, if you're a developer, that's where you're gonna start. Because if you get knocked down, you're only out six hundred and fifty bucks. You're not out an architect, an engineer, that's a lot of money when you start adding it up, I'm sure you know.
So, can someone, is there, would you have, not you per se, but would you, perhaps people on your board can take this on as a project and see if they can develop a policy manual?
Well, I'm not sure it's, I'm just saying, I'm not sure it's, I'm teaching you a question.
It's not, it's not a zoning board of appeals, uh, it's in, it's not in their purview. You, you need to read what the, what their, uh, what their charge is, and that, that's not in it. But it, but it's not something that's difficult to do. I mean, like I just said, if, if you were to go online and, and check a couple of different towns around, copy them down and say, no, talk to the planning, planning board, the zoning board, and just say, this is what you have to do, it, it, within a, probably within a very short period of time, you could have a packet to give out to someone.
Denise, did you do it in your, um, previous position?
We had, um, we had a town planner who put those things together. But I think that's a great topic for your January seventeenth workshop.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right.
To discuss that.
I mean, there's a, there's a regional, I, I understand there's a regional planning, uh-
Committee. Merrimack Valley Regional Planning?
That's right. They, they could do that.
Access information from?
That's right, because, because in, in, when I first started in code enforcement, uh, we didn't have a full-time planner. We, we worked under a regional planner. And then, uh, I went to a larger town which had a planner. So, uh, all, all the information that, that we obtained was through a regional, and I know there's a regional on here that-
There is in April.
There's been, there's been talk-
I think Bob O'Hanley might sit on that board along with Bob Arctalia.
They could develop that very easily for you.
Well, maybe Bob can produce some information for the seventeenth, that meeting. And, um, maybe either Bill or I will go to Georgetown and grab some information there, or kind of bring it to the table, see what we can come up with.
I know.
Two years ago, Merrimack Valley had a class on permitting, the ease of permitting in town, so I know they have all the literature.
Right.
Can you, can you provide it to us?
I'll give them a call.
For us, for the January seventeenth meeting, something that you might be able to present? Great, thank you.
You had something to say?
One thing that's unique about the town of Groveland, that it's hard to follow other things, is we have a river. We have certain setbacks and things that have to be addressed because of the river. So, that's one, one reason that you, it's hard just to take something from another town because each town has, uh, some towns have a dump in it, some towns have a transfer station, and it's sometimes, they have various things. We used to have Trimont, that was a big issue that we don't have anymore. They used to do blasting down it. That's not a problem now, you know? So, each town is a little different, you have to take-
Right, but I'm sure Merrimack Valley Regional Planning has all of that information right there because I think we are, we're partners with them, so we should be.
Yeah, you're talking about a process, uh, that. I mean, the process is the same, whether you have all, all these, the water or whatever. It's still the same process. You've still gotta go through A, B, C, D, E. And, and, and what happens during that process, what you're talking about is gonna get discussed on the planning, on the planning issues because of the water and because of blasting, but, but it's the same process for everyone that comes to town.
Steps that need to be taken.
The same steps, it's just, it's just different.
That would be excellent.
Yeah, it'd be different, different, uh-
Mike, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
The other problem that, you know, I've spoken to you before about this, is inter-board communication. And, you know, I told you about that Merrimack Valley Planning MIMAP program. Even if we could somehow start today with that to get all the board decisions on paper that we have in files busting out, if they were online, so we could communicate better, so that I can, somebody walks into conservation, I can see what all the other boards are doing about a particular property. So, I hope we can talk about that on the seventeenth.
We are gonna meet on the seventeenth, and I hope everybody's able to attend, because that's a good place to put everything down on paper and brainstorm.
You mentioned seventeenth. If I hadn't looked at my email before I come, I wouldn't know about that. I'm not sure that everyone did that. You might wanna-
I think everybody did get, um-
It was the, it's the all-boards workshop.
Yeah, I got it today.
Oh.
But I'm, I just, I-
Did you get it today?
I know, I'm, I'm not sure if other people got it today. I know you mentioned it, but, I mean, I got it at about four o'clock today, so.
If we go, if we go back to this case, four forty-one Main Street, I think it's a lot of errors, and I think it's gonna be a learning process in the town that we need to grow, we need to fix. Like Mike said, and I've been an advocate from day one, I've talked to Pat and his daughter about it. We need to put A, B, C, D, N, F, G in place. And I think if we can get that, we're not gonna keep having these problems down the road. And in all defense to the neighbors in this project, the project's underway, the project's moving forward. Home Depot, Walmart, Walgreens, all those big businesses, they meet with the neighbors, they talk with the neighbors, they work things out with the neighbors, and I think that this project-
And I think that this project, it could be a good project for Groveland. I, I would, you know, I, I can't believe it wouldn't, but the neighbors need to be heard. And I think tonight, I hope, you know, I don't know how many neighbors are here, but we've talked a lot about a lot of things, but I still want to let the neighbors know that we're here.
They're included.
Included, and they're being heard. And I hope they are heard through the process, and I think it's all going to start going forward now. I think everything's in line. We're moving it forward, and I hope we can get everyone's answers taken care of and get everybody on, online.
So, so January's a big month.
Big month. A meeting early in the month, the 7th, did you say? 7th, and, and we have the, what is it, the 17th or the 18th?
17th.
Saturday, yeah.
Saturday session, that's all.
Just let me make one final statement. Out of all the people that proposed to buy this people, piece of property, the person that came along that finally bought it, in the vision, the final vision that he has for this piece of property, and I've sat with him in his office for hours, and we've discussed the whole thing. He has a wonderful vision for this piece of property, to make it into something very, very beautiful. And the other people that proposed to buy it, it wouldn't have come out like it's going to come out if he's allowed to finish the project with the vision that he has for it.
Very good. As long as everybody's following the rules, regulations, laws, I think it possibly would be a very good project. And that's, you know, a lot of input. People, people didn't know, not all boards were on board or found out after the fact. So I appreciate everybody coming in tonight. Does anybody else want to say something before we conclude this part of the meeting? All set? Jim, you had a comment. You had your hand up when.
No.
You all set?
In the meeting.
Okay, very good. Another meeting, all right. Thank you, thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, it's quarter of nine. At eight thirty, we should have been voted. Are we going to do the license for Dewar Street?
Yes.
This evening?
Yes.
Do we have to have any discussion on that?
So if you'd like, I can just go down the list of what you're actually voting and signing off on. Most of it, you've already discussed and authorized in the past. This is just the formal, final documents. Again, the Mattingly property is scheduled to close this Wednesday, the 31st. We don't see any issues with that going forward. The Angelini property, there have been some issues in this late hour that have come up. So that will not be going forward on Wednesday, we don't believe. So if there are any changes to the documents that you are signing off on today, Town Council will send them to you for approval before they're submitted and filed. The first license is for the town to use the privately-owned Dewar Street for water supply purposes only. Again, you agreed to the terms of it at your last meeting. This is the final license that just needs to be approved and signed off of.
Do I have a motion that we approve that license for the Dewar Street water supply purpose?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. We're not doing the second one, Denise, correct?
We are going to still do all of them.
Okay.
And then if anything changes, I will let you know. But in case nothing changes, we're going to go forward. So the second license is for Mr. Angelini to haul the earth off of the busing property now that the town owns that property. Again, you've agreed to the terms of it. It's just the final component, component of approving and signing that license.
Do I have approval on that license? Do we all agree that that's something that we should move ahead on? We've talked about it in the past.
Yep.
Okay.
Need a motion for that?
Motion, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the license to grant the use of the busing property to Mr. Angelini for earth removal hauling.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we approve the earth removal permit?
Can we just get a second on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And vote on them?
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
The earth removal permit, you've already discussed. The Water Commissioners met earlier this evening, voted and signed off on it. This actually only requires Betty's signature, requires Betty's signature.
Would need a vote for me to sign that?
I would say yes, you should vote just to have it.
Do I have?
I'll make a motion to.
Allow me to do that?
To allow Betty to sign off on the earth removal authorization between the Water and Soil Commissioners and William Angelini Jr.
Have a second, please?
Second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one is the deed acceptance for the Angelini property. And so this is, this has the breakdown of the purchase price, the dispersment authorization. There are two copies, which only require Betty's signature on this as well.
Do I have a motion that you allow me to do that? Deed acceptance and relevant documents?
I'll make that motion, review, vote, sign. Do you, excuse me, accept the Mattingly Land Parcel 339, is that?
Yeah, we're on the Angelini deed acceptance.
I'm on the four.
I thought the Angelini would, we had some issues and we can't move forward.
We are still signing the paperwork because the town does not, we do not see any changes being made. But if his attorney comes back and wants to make changes.
Came up earlier today, but we haven't seen them, so we're just.
So if there are any, there's a second page, actually, in the purple tab as well. So if there are any changes, I will bring them back to you. But if there are not, we'd like to go forward with the paperwork at this time.
All right, very good. I'd like to make a motion that we sign the Angelini deed acceptance and other relevant documents.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The next two, three documents are all on the Mattingly property, which again, is going forward. The first one is the acceptance of deed. And then we have the legal description that will be filed and the closing statement and dispersment authorization.
Can we vote all, for all of those in one?
They have to be individual.
You could do them as one.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion. Let me just write this down because I've got to maintain the minutes. So just give me a second, okay?
That's all three of you. These two are just Betty.
I make a motion that we accept the Mattingly Land Parcel Purchase, Parcel 339, and vote to approve the deed. And also sign the Mattingly Land Purchase Settlement and also the dispersment authorization. Those three documents.
Seconded.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you.
We have six minutes to approve?
Yes. Betty, do you want a cough drop?
Yeah.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve. I'll do these separately. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from our November 24th meeting. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from our December 12th meeting. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those minutes have been approved.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay. So the next, now you have to renew the common vic licenses. You can do them all in one motion, but you should read them all for the minutes. And the same goes with the Class II used car licenses on the back page.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the common virtual license renewals for one year. And I'll list them one by one. Pentucket Regional School District, 253 Main Street. Conservation Commission, 201 Washington Street. Cedar Dale Swim and Tennis Club, Groveland, Inc., 20 Bear Hill Road. Nichols Village, One Nichols Way. T and B Clifford, LLL, DBA Cafe 97, 921 Salem Street. Robert Arakilian, DBA, Groveland Fairways, 156 Main Street. J and S Restaurant Corp., DBA, Tea Garden, 904 Salem Street. Pizza Grove, LLC, 990 Salem Street. LPM Holding Company, DBA Epicurean Feast at Chesterton, 860 Salem Street. Hawth Pizza, LLC, DBA, De Leo's Pizza, 180 Main Street. Michael H. Conley, DBA, Groveland Diner, One Elm Park. Terry Clifford, T and B Clifford, DBA, Pub 97, 935 Salem Street. F and M Company, LLC, DBA, Your Place and Ours, 8 Elm Park. Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream and Food, 928 Salem Street. And we have Class II used car license renewals. I'll read all four of them. South Salem Street Corp., DBA, Price Right Automotive. Greenwood Auto Body, Richard Allen Greenwood, 863 Salem Street. Groveland Auto Repair and Sales, Inc., 944 Salem Street. And the last one, Auto Repairs, et cetera, 923 Salem Street.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion, thank you. Any discussion?
All in favor on those?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great.
Okay, moving right along. We have correspondence from Pentucket Arts Foundation. Is that something that we should be making a note of?
This is something Joe had forwarded me and asked to have it placed as a correspondence, so.
Something on that, Joe?
It's regarding a grant.
Thank you. Do I, do you have a copy of that?
It's in your packet.
Yeah, I just did a little filing on the side. So let me, let me read that out if I.
And just while you're looking through, we're missing two of the licenses that were just voted on. So I don't know where they are on the table, if they've made it down there. But just don't file those away.
Okay. Let me see if I can, just give me a second because I, here it is. Okay. So the Board of Selectmen received correspondence from the Pentucket Arts Foundation and wanted to share this information, good news from the Board of Directors of the Pentucket Arts Foundation. As leaders of the Pentucket Arts Foundation, we seek ways to inspire the community through new and creative cultural arts experiences. That's why we are so excited to tell you about our new Arts Connecting Community Artist Grant. So I won't go into the details, but this is essentially a, a grant that's available to local artists in Groveland, Merrimack, and West Newbury. And it's sponsored by the Pentucket Arts Foundation. And there's a cycle for generating applications and for awarding money. And for the first cycle of this exciting new grant, we will be awarding up to $1,500 following a one-month open application period from January 1 through the January 31st of 2015. And the awards will be announced in March of 2015. So if anyone has an artist in their household and they live in Groveland, West Newbury, or Merrimack, and they'd like to find out more about this arts grant program, they should contact directly the Board of Directors of the Pentucket Arts Foundation. Thanks for that.
And we have meeting minutes from the 15th to approve?
Nope, this is just for you to read. It's on next Monday's agenda to approve.
All right, sorry. And we have a resignation from the Groveland Light Department. One of its commissioners, Ken Rollins, has resigned his position in the Light Department effective immediately. And he did this just recently. And I want to thank him for serving. I think he's served several years over there. And they will be looking to replace him.
Yes, so in your packet also is a letter from Robert Brady, the Chair of the Light Commissioners. They are, they have a candidate that they are recommending. It is on your agenda for next Monday evening. It's a joint appointment similar to the water vacancy. It's a joint appointment. Their candidate is Sean LeBeau. So I have asked for a resume for Mr. LeBeau and also for the Light Commissioners to be present to just make that appointment. I've also asked if he's available to be present as well, if you'd like to speak with him. So that is on there for next Monday. That is just a brief meeting to discuss capital items, but I did, I didn't want to leave that position vacant. So I did put it on there. Also, in your packet is a copy of a letter from the Light Department's attorneys. There's been some discussion around town on whether or not they were within their right, the Groveland Light Department was within their right to purchase the new property they did. This is the opinion of council citing Mass General Law, that they did not need town meeting approval. There is no appropriation by town meeting for any non-borrowing purpose of a light department. So this is just information for you to have and to read. So if you receive any questions, you do have the necessary backup.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for giving us that. Do, is there any new business other than what, Joe?
The only thing I.
About this evening?
The only thing I have is I ask if we can review this in another meeting down the road. This is the plan that I had talked about. We talked briefly last week at the Main Street in the Bridge property. I got some information. I met with a couple of the ex-board members and went over it with them. And I'd like to just bring you guys up for breast on it in a, in a future agenda item.
Okay. Because it is privately owned and so we can't.
I'm not trying to vote on it, I'm just trying to.
Just want to have a discussion about.
Just, no, no, no voting, nothing. Just, I just want to bring you a breast on it because there's been some talk.
Can we have that conversation next time we need? Is there going to be enough time?
It's up to the board. It would require an executive session. So it's up to the board. If you'd like to do it, you could meet next Monday or the Monday after. We do have meetings the next two weeks, so.
If we went into executive session, would it be the after of a meeting? Is there, are there that many things on for next Monday?
So you do have a draft agenda in here. You can see, right now, the only item is the appointment. And then it's the discussion. I've been asked to have Capitol attend the meeting with your approval to discuss their capital requests in the upcoming budget year. And then there was, we were asked, the board was asked to discuss the future use of the Pines Recreation Area for special events going forward. Those are the only items on your agenda currently for next week.
I think the meeting and the executive session is a great idea. I, I think it's easy for us to meet next week. I just want to make sure that we also have in attendance Mike Dempsey. So, because he can provide us with information regarding, you know, what he understands about the property from his experiences, so. So.
That's up for the chairs.
So, yeah, so we could decide to do it next week, subject to Mike Dempsey's availability. And if not, we'll try for the following week.
Why would we need Mike there, Joe? I'm just asking.
He can give us updates on a recent study that was done in that area. Also, there's ongoing, I don't know what the word, is it remediation or just the cleanup of the property? So he can provide us some, some information regarding that to support some of the work that was done many years ago by the Bridge. I believe that would have been the Bridge Committee.
Right.
The Bridge.
I think he can give us some good, good, good information, that, good technical information about the, the area.
Joe, Bill, you said you have something to be discussed in, did you?
Yeah, I don't want to talk too much about it because I guess I can't. But this is just a plan that was done that I wanted to discuss the layout. I have not, no other input other than, I don't want to get into it right now, but once you see the plan and once you understand what's going on. It's just a plan of a layout, but I'd like to, that's all. I don't, I'm not looking to talk any other than that.
And then last thing, also the last thing about Mike, he's, from his perspective as the Chair of the Conservation, excuse me, Community Preservation Committee, he is, has an interest in, in, in the property as well and has some information about it that might be helpful to us. So I, I think he would add to our conversation, that's all.
I just don't want it to go down a road where we jeopardize, you know, we don't own the property. It's not a clean site. You know, we can't be buying more property or attempting to. We've got, we're.
I would like to, me, I'm not the Chair. I would like to, if we could, the three of us talk about my findings here and then in a future meeting, get Mike in on it.
Okay.
Because this may, this may end up, some of your.
That's fine.
This knowledge you get out of this might resolve.
That's fine, and then if we can do that, then I don't, I don't object to meeting in an executive session next week if you guys are all available.
Alright.
Yeah, we can do that. We just meet earlier.
We're trying to play catch up with our meetings, because we took a little hiatus.
So if we meet at six, maybe we can do the executive session at five.
Or you could do it at seven, when the meeting ends. It's up to you.
Okay. Whatever you, whatever you, whatever you, 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 you feel comfortable with, Betty, it's fine with me and Bill. I'm flexible either way, so.
Seven's easier for me 'cause of work, but that's.
Okay, then, that's fine. Fine.
Can we talk about something the next time, about? I, I've heard rumors that we're going to lose a valuable employee, and I don't know what to do about that.
I was going to address that under select, under my finance director time, if you.
Do, do you want to do that now?
Yes, so, I mean, two things I have on that. So with the board's permission, I, well, without the board's permission, but I'm asking for it now. I have reached out to the um, head of the Teamsters Union that represents the town of Groveland. I would like to meet with him, I'm actually meeting with him Wednesday morning, to discuss a possible addendum to the Highway Department contract. I think this is important, not necessarily to persuade an employee to stay, but I think it's important for all employees going forward. With um, discussions with Bob Arakalian, we thought it would be important to reward employees for obtaining certain licenses in town. It's currently not being addressed in their contract. If employees take the initiative to better themselves and obtain certain licenses that are useful to the department, not necessarily required. We would like to see some dollar amount, fifty cents more an hour for each license. If they don't keep up those licenses, we would then take that fee away. It's, so it's a way of rewarding and then hopefully retaining these employees that are beneficial to the community and to the department. As you know, um, there is an employee that is looking to leave. And he's taking with him the knowledge and all the licenses that he's obtained here that are very valuable to us. He is currently the only employee that has many of the licenses to use some of the equipment in town. Again, this is not, we're not doing this to persuade him to stay. I think it's important that if we're looking for people to better themselves and get these, there should be some type of incentive.
Retent, retention of pe, good people that take it upon themselves.
Correct.
To go out and, and.
It's no different than the fire department, training the fire department, that we, you know, we train the fire department people, we put, you know, equipment on them, it's no different than that. And I definitely think that's, you're going to get a qual, different type of person, and you're going to get quality people, and I think it's, I'm all for it.
So I would, so um, with your permission, I will meet with him on Wednesday and come back to the board, um, next Monday if we come to an agreement. There is money in the, if we decided to implement this immediately. There is money in the current um, Highway Department budget from their part-time wages that was not spent. Again, it would not amount to much right now, because there is only one employee that has these additional licenses. But I do think we should start looking at some of the contracts and incentivizing people that are bettering themselves and obtaining, um, you know, credentials and licenses that we benefit from.
And it's not an appointment, so we don't have, there's no, we can change a contract. We can do an addendum at any time.
We can do an addendum, so that's why I have reached out to the, the head of the, or the representative from the Teamsters Union, who is coming here, to see what our options are. We're not looking to touch anything else in the contract. We're not looking to take anything away. If anything, we would look to, um, the Highway Department is going to come before the board or the Finance Board and ask for an additional person next year. With this, we may say we'd like to have a junior operator, so that currently in the contract, it's senior operator and foreman. So we'd like to maybe add a junior level that doesn't require some of these licenses. So that may be part of our negotiation. If you allow us to put in a junior level, we'll sort of add these incentives that would cover anybody that obtains them.
Very good.
But.
So, once you engage with the Teamster Union representative and you pre-negotiate, let's say, a condition. It becomes a vote of the, of this board ultimately.
Correct, you would accept the addendum if there is a addendum to accept.
And it's sort of, sort of kind of related to that. How would, how are you, uh, because this is, this is a finance directors time. How are you, um, what's the response rate or quality of response from departments to get you information to shape the budget? Are, are people responding, or?
Well, I don't know. So the deadline was January ninth. I have not received any budgets yet.
Okay.
So I don't know. I know a lot of people have come in. Um, as I told you at one of the meetings, um, I have changed the requirements. I'm asking people to actually do some work that they haven't done in the past. Some people have come in with almost sticker shock. They don't know what to do. There's spreadsheets they have to complete. There's a narrative they have to provide. There's goals that I've asked them to, um, put down for their department. I've asked them to look at the, any permits or fees that they take in, look at those, see if they're aligned with other communities. So I've really asked them to really evaluate the departments. I, I do think it would take some time. But they have come in. A lot of people have gotten reports from, um, the town accountant on their past three years, so they can really look at their budget requests.
So, so you'll let us know if you need some support with that?
Mm-hmm.
Or let the Chair know, that she can help, help things along, so, okay, good. I hate deadlines. We all hate deadlines, but it's important, and, you know, we want to do a great job with you. You know, formulating our first budget together, so. But it's built on a lot of homework right now that some people have to do, and some of that homework's never been done before, so I get it.
Right, and I would like to, I mean, this is down the road, but I would like to look at next year. Uh, we don't have a formal budget process here. I think right now, there's a lot of time wasted. In my opinion, the Finance Committee shouldn't start meeting until this board actually adopts a budget and then sends it on to the Finance Committee. So right now, there's a lot of, uh, back and forth. The capital improvement started sort of early in the process. So I would like to formalize a process for the budget. And I would like to get to the point that we're actually publishing a budget document with everyone's mission statement, goals. Statistics of how many fire calls, how many police calls are made, things like that, that actually is a representative of this town. Um, and what we, what our budget is covering, you know, what our state aid is, what our revenues look like. So that people have a physical document that can tell you all about our finances.
So, as the Fire Chief said, we're leaving a lot of money on the table, because we don't charge. You know, it's, it's nice that we don't charge everybody, but maybe something minimal would be helpful.
And I do think, looking at the permits and the fees that I've seen, we are low compared to, um, other communities. And I think some of that, you know, is fine, but I think some of it, we should be a little healthier in, um, competition with our surrounding towns. So I do think, um, over the next year, we should start looking at, and I think we should get into a cycle, a cyclical, you know, every few years, reevaluate our fees. You know, in my conversation with the Chief, actually earlier today, he said for at least ten years, those fees haven't been touched. And that shouldn't be the case. It should be every few years. At least we should go through a process of evaluating them. If we don't change them, that's fine, but we should still look at them, see where we are, see, you know, again, what our other communities are charging for these same processes.
Okay.
And Denise, we need to meet with you too, because you've been with us nine months or more. And so we would like to talk about your compensation.
Well, we, uh, on Selectmen's time, I actually only have one item tonight. I know that might be a shock. But thank you. Thanks, Betty. You know, you've been articulating this for a while, and I, I really appreciate it. We, we haven't gotten around to it. I, and I'd like to make a suggestion that we, we, uh, we ask Denise to meet with us in executive session at her earliest inconvenience. Next week or the week after. Uh, to discuss your job description, your role, and um, uh, collectively, I think there's a feeling that there's probably going to be some mutually beneficial modification to it. So I believe that should be done in executive session. I think that that would also ultimately be your decision anyways, but if you're not a, i- if we, if it qualifies it as a, as an executive session matter. Let's do it that way. If it has to be open meeting, we'll do it that way. Or it could be a combination. We start one way and then we finish it another way. I, I think finishing has to be done openly.
It does. Anything to have an executive session needs to be voted on.
So would you be available to meet with us next week?
Sure.
Okay.
You pay me to be here, so just tell me when.
Alright, so we're going to have to do it at, uh, you know, we'll do the seven o'clock, uh, we'll do two executive sessions then. Two separate sessions, one for the, um, the information that Bill has brought us, which is, I'm excited to learn about that. That's, that's a lot of hard work that a lot of people did in the past. And then, you know, very importantly, we'd like to talk to you about your role.
Okay.
Is that okay, Betty? Bill?
It sounds, I think that's something you need to address.
We, um, we're not premature to do this.
No.
I'm sorry, what's?
No.
No, I said we're not premature to do this.
No. Have you been with us for nine months?
No, no, I don't mean, I don't mean Denise, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's an important time too, because we need to engage next year, twenty fifteen, with a clear plan. So we'd like to understand what your role's going to be, 'cause it's been expanding kind of morph, morphing anyway, so.
One more thing. When I stopped by to say Merry Christmas to everybody in the building, and they're all very grateful that they had the time off to be with their families. They really appreciated that.
That's huge.
But I did talk with, with Anne Brody, our town clerk, and um, she has a very responsible job keeping, with her record-keeping and. She, she expressed some concerns about her office, and um, you know, there were some documents that people were looking for and. You know, Anne went through everything hoping to find them, and, and she couldn't, and she felt like, almost like she was being accused of some, doing something wrong. And we know that's not Anne at all. So I said, Anne, why don't you just change your locks again? You have a key, and Denise has a key. That's it. Denise, you know, it, it's not good for just one person to have the key, if somebody were away or. So, um, if you'd support me on that, that Anne, she said she was going to be watching, but it's kind of late. She might, she was wanted to come in. Can we make that suggestion, that she do that, and that the only keys would be for Anne Brody and yourself?
Sure.
Does that, does that take a vote to do that, or?
No, I mean, she's an elected official. She could actually, um, do that.
Well, she should know that we, I think it would be the consensus of the board that we would absolutely, wholeheartedly support that.
And, and I do think, I, I have spoken to Anne about this issue. I do think part of the problem is, um, which I've obviously addressed with you, is the lack of storage. So things are kind of, you know, piling up around, which we are starting to work on, um, that storage space. So I think, you know, no fault of anyone's, I think things may have been misfiled or moved to make space for something, and, you know. Unfortunately, with, you know, if you've seen our one vault, everything's just kind of piled up there. People have access, people are in and out. So I do think, you know, converting that, moving stuff, actually having locked file cabinets that people have specific access to, um, will help some of that as well.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thanks for bringing that up, Betty.
She's very conscientious, and, and it worried her, so.
I had one thing I don't know if I can talk about, but I'll keep, try and keep it brief. On the draft of next week. Can we meet as a board prior to just have discussion about the three proposals, or we have to do it in, in public? From the finance impro, capital improvements?
It's public. There's nothing executive about that.
Publicly. So you can't discuss it, or you can't look at the proposal just yourself?
You certainly can, I mean, I can, they, they did email.
I saw them, yeah, but I didn't know as a. You can't do it as a board. You have to wait till they are in front of you and then.
No, you can certainly meet as a, but it's a public meeting, so you could start at, you know, you could meet at, I can push them back to six thirty if you'd like to discuss it amongst yourselves for a while.
The reason I was bringing it up is because, as a board, you would think you'd like to talk about it a little bit before. Yeah, in front of the people.
And you still, I mean, you don't necessarily have to make a decision that night. So they do have one more week. They are meeting, I believe, the thirteenth to finalize their plan. Um, and you're meeting again on the twelfth. So if you all get into a discussion next Monday and you feel you cannot make an informed decision, we can certainly put the vote off until the following Monday.
Bill, what's the issue? What, what's specific concern?
I just, there's three proposals coming before us.
Yeah.
And as a board, I thought maybe we, all three of us could look at the, the three decisions, talk about it a little bit, and then meet with them. I mean, if that's, if you guys don't feel comfortable about it, then we don't feel comfortable about it.
No, I, I, you bring up a very good point, um.
I don't like go, I don't like going into something, I mean, I've read it on my desk, don't get me wrong. I've seen the proposals, but.
The school committee, on my experience, and that doesn't mean that it has to be our experience, but. We used to have a lot more reading that we have, that I've ever seen on this board. Tonight was a heavy reading packet, if you will. But we, for many years, the packet was actually delivered to our home on the Friday before a meeting. And I would spend, along with members of the school committee, which is still a practice, spend many hours reading through, going through the packet so that we would be prepared, uh, at the board. Now, a few years ago, um, the school committee changed that by posting the entire packet online, which was available and accessible, um, you know, to anyone. So the po, the part of the packet that was, uh, executive session, of course, would not be posted. So I think, w, one of the things we need to address as a board, 'cause things are getting very complicated, and there's a lot of information that we're, we're getting hit with. We either come in an hour before each meeting, which could be very difficult, or at some point, and we'll address this, uh, perhaps with Denise when we discuss the role. But at some point, if we, at some point next year, we begin to see the entire packet of information available online somewhere. So that we can access it over the weekend prior to that Monday meeting. That will help us be better prepared to debate issues, talk about them, and be prepared to possibly make, you know, decisions. 'Cause I agree with you. We've got three things coming at us next week, and I might not get here early enough to be able to read through everything to get comfortable with it. Never mind talk about it, just even understanding it.
The Finance, uh, the Finance Board and the Capital Improvement Board, they all sat down as a committee and they discussed their, their, they got their findings. They got three findings.
Right.
So why us as a board, we should not be able to sit down and discuss their findings before we're in front of them. That's how I feel.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a letter here that's like ten, ten.
Well, they're just an advisory board.
No, I understand. I'm not saying we're making a decision. I just, yeah.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need time to.
It's a big, it's a, that's a lot of money you're talking about. That's a lot of, that's a lot of, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, I like to make an informed decision, right?
Well, the best way to inform ourselves is if we commit some time on weekends prior to Mondays to, to, to read this stuff. So, and we, maybe we'll talk about that when, uh, when we're talking about Denise's role in terms of, 'cause I know that she had expressed interest in putting things online and men, uh, agendas and minutes. So eventually, we can make that a goal also, that, uh, the packet is eventually, uh, maybe in, by the end of the first quarter, we begin to see it somewhere. Whether it's for, available for us to pick up here, that, that's the easiest solution, or it's delivered to our home, or it's in, or it's put on, on the website. So I wouldn't have any problems committing my time on a weekend prior to, to do the necessary reading, as I did for s, you know, s, six years on the school committee, to be better prepared for a meeting. I mean, we have a document here, it's about ten or twelve pages. I mean, this is, this requires study. And I saw it tonight, and I did not give it enough time, for example.
I do think, no, I don't, that was emailed to you yesterday.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I, I realize it came in an email and I missed that. I saw the first part of it, but not the rest of it, but, but you bring up a great point. But if we get into the, if we get into the business, if we get into the habit, we as, you know, in our service to our community, as board members of this board. Get into the habit of studying the material in advance. The other safety mechanism is we've already agreed to a two-meeting rule for anything serious anyways. So no one's going to be jumping down anyone's throat and say, well, let's make a decision tonight about something. So I totally agree with you. If it's big, it's important. Let's study.
Well, yeah, I, I think, I think it's a big item. I think you're talking about some big items, and I think that we really, as a board, should talk about a little bit beforehand.
Yeah, I agree.
That's not the only proposal out there, because.
No.
We talked with Denise about what we, we are able to do, what we might be able to do, so there's, you know.
I may pick up some information off of you. I may pick up some information off of Joe, where, and you may pick up some information off of me, if we all three of us talk about it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what it's about.
Do you want me to invite the Fire Chief? Because again, his proposal was not three different ones, so. I don't know if you want to discuss anything with him before you decide, or if you're all set with.
I, 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 I will value, if Bob shows up at a meeting that pertains to something that he's expert in or has some expertise in, I certainly wouldn't say no to that.
But I think I wouldn't want that right now. I would rather go and talk about it with you three, these three proposals, because it's going to be amongst us. Then maybe at a later date, bring Bob in, 'cause of course he's going to push for what he wants, you know what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm totally flexible, whichever.
I would rather have it biased in the beginning, and then, then bring the other party in.
I think we all know the community and how most people feel when we're out and about, and people might say something to us in the shopping, uh, center or demolish. That they would not feel comfortable coming in here and saying.
Right.
But they want their message delivered.
Right.
And they want, you know, they want to let us know how it is for them and what they value and. But they want their message delivered, and they want, you know, they want to let us know how it is for them and what they value, and. I don't think they want to insult anybody, but they certainly have the people that write their checks to pay their real estate taxes, and. Denise, when we get the assessment on our taxes for Center Street, when, when will that, people think they've already received that, but they haven't.
They will not. So the taxes are going out, probably mailed tomorrow, the January first tax bill. It does not include Center Street. It only includes nineteen thousand dollars worth of interest because we temporarily financed it for the first nine months. So if anything were to change with that property, if you decided to sell it, anything like that, that would be done prior to, or the discussion would be done prior to us permanently borrowing it. If we go ahead and borrow it next June, the first principal payment will be on their taxes next December. So when they get their January twenty sixteen tax bill, they will start seeing the effects of that vote.
I know there were projections made on the, on an average home in Groveland, which is what valued at, what, between three fifty and four hundred thousand dollars? And do you know what that increase came out to?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
I don't remember either. Okay. Anybody else want to say something before we?
No, I stuck to only one tonight.
I have warrants to sign in front of me here, so I don't know which, are those the only ones I can sign?
Yes, the pairols over here. I've taken it away.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
We can wait till you sign.
Want me to sign?
I want to leave you alone and sign documents. We can wait.
Joe, are those the licenses, I believe, down there that?
Yeah, I've got them.
So, that doesn't sound like that money all comes on at once?
It will not.
So it's bits and pieces?
Correct. It's, it's what we're paying each year. So what we're paying back in debt is what will then be applied against the taxes. So they won't have three million dollars upfront. They'll have, if we borrow it for ten years, they'll have just the principal interest associated with that payment. Correct. So it will affect their taxes for a ten-year period if we borrow it for ten years.
Bit each year.
Correct.
I get you now. I'm learning. Slowly, but surely. I would like to see that, that property somewhere down the road, that we sell some commercial space off and reduce our debt.
Which property are you talking about?
Ours.
I think, I think Bill wants to sell it.
No, no, no. I think that, I think that we need to reduce our debt, and we're trying to find some commercial properties in town.
Absolutely.
We got some right in the front here.
I agree with you.
I don't see why we can't get the debt down and increase the business of town.
I agree. You want to make that an agenda item, seriously, at some point?
We should.
Maybe we should.
Should have that discussion.
You know, like in February, honestly, we should. That's like serious discussion.
Open conversation.
It's, it won't be anything new to me, because I had proposed a long time ago a use for that property, so.
Definitely.
And we can maybe get some people in, and we'll invite some Board members and get a discussion going.
Sure, the town people would love to see the debt go down. You know what I'm saying? So I mean, I don't see that, you're going to see a problem, and also keep some open space, but get the debt down and bring some cur- commercial, you're getting three, three wins.
A combination of uses.
Right, you're getting three wins out of that.
Can we make that an agenda item, first week in February?
Madam Chair?
Sure you can.
Bill's been talking about it for a few months.
No, it's a good idea. It's a very valid, valid point.
Sure.
Good point.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved, and no discussion required.
No discussion. Going home. Thank you.
Thanks.